So, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Holyoke School Committee meeting. It's Monday, April 26. Meeting will start at 6:01 PM. Ms. LaFawn, roll call, please. You're on mute, Ms. LaFawn.
Tricky little microphone. Mayor McGee? Ms. LaFave?
Wrong mayor.
Yeah.
Mayor Murphy? Mayor Murphy? Good thing he's not here. I'm getting old. Mayor Murphy? Mr. Ms. LaFave?
Present.
Mr. Sheen?
Present.
Ms. Brunel? Ms. Tensley-Williams?
Present.
Thank you. Mrs. Burks?
Present.
Ms. Feliciano-Sims? Mr. Willihan?
Here.
Mr. Collmore? Mr. Krishane?
Present.
I don't see Shadé Mota. Shadé, are you there? Sam Brennan? Not yet.
I see that we have also, um, Aaron is under attendees.
She just came in, yeah? Got her.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Yeah, and I don't see them.
And you also see if folks from the high school team are here?
So, we have Al Gates, Lori McKenna, we have Lori Dennis, Marion Couriers here, Val's here.
Okay, good.
And Mahoney and Tiffany. So, whenever you want them, let me know and we'll bring them forward. Just tell me.
Okay, so, we're good with roll call and Ms. Brunel, you were able to get for the roll call?
If you need me to officially say I'm here, I'm here.
Yes, yes, sorry, Ari. Sorry, Mildred, I'm muted again.
That's okay. All right, so all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. Thank you, Mr. Krishane, for bringing the flag. I didn't see it until the end.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. So, just really quickly, pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 20, I'm hereby informing all attendees that a video and audio recording is being made of the meeting and the meeting is being livestreamed and run live on the city's community TV channel. And we're also doing interpretation, correct? Is that fair to say?
That's correct.
Okay. Also, just a friendly reminder, um, if you have any questions or comments to make, please make sure to use the raise hand icon. I will be monitoring that. If you are not, um, on the school committee or a student rep or Ms. LaFawn or the receiver slash superintendent, please make sure to have your cameras off until you are up for your portion of the meeting. And I want to just remind everyone to maintain their mute button or maintain muted unless they're speaking so that way we don't have that background noise. Before I move forward to what's on the agenda, I would like to take a moment of silence. Just pay our respects as we lost one of Holyoke's finest, Mrs. Burks, on April 18th. She was really a true champion for public education and she will be greatly missed. So, with that said, moment of silence, please. Mrs. Burks, did you want to share something?
So, on behalf of Dennis, Buddy, Maya, Ari, myself, and our extended family, we'd just like to say thank you to the Holyoke community for all the condolences, the prayers, and all the love that we felt over the last week. You know, she was little, but she was fierce. She was a strong, strong supporter of the Holyoke Public Schools and education in general and special education especially. She gave voices to people that didn't feel they had voices and gave us the strength to, to help others. And she leaves a legacy that is large. And we just wanted to take a moment to say thank you to everybody for all of the support.
Thank you so much, Ms. Burks. And again, we extend our deepest condolences and prayers to you and your family. We're going to move forward with, um, the student showcase, and I just need clarification. For the student showcase, I have here Dean School students. Do we have Dean School students here for the student showcase portion?
Yeah, I wanted to apologize. We had a student, a sophomore student from the Dean Campus lined up. He's been working closely with one of our teachers, Jose Pedraza, around our social media outreach and communications and, and just campus communication with the students. And he's been doing an amazing job. Unfortunately, he was unable to attend today, so, um, we, we are looking to see if he would be willing to come to a future school committee meeting. I know how important these student showcases are and we definitely wanted to showcase that student, but unfortunately, he, he was not able to attend today and we got the notice today.
Okay, thank you so much. I just wanted to make sure. I didn't want to miss, miss anyone. Next item on the agenda is public comment. And we did receive, I'm looking it up, I know I did receive one, but I believe I received another. So, okay. So, I have the second one. So, I'm going to read the first one. So, it starts off with "To whom it may concern." This comes from, um, Mr. and Mrs. Marcus and Carrie. And I, again, I apologize if I, if I pronounce it wrong. Humber or Humber? "We are the parents of a second grader at Metcalf Elementary and a fifth grader at Metcalf Middle. We are thankful for the wonderful education that our children are receiving through the Holyoke Public School System. We are writing today about our concern with the 2021-2022 school calendar, specifically the early start date. We feel that school staff, students, and families have been enormously impacted by the pandemic and it is in everyone's interest to have schools start when it traditionally has during the last week of August. This school year has been grueling for school staff. Every aspect of education needed to be adjusted to meet the restrictions of the pandemic. Most school employees have never been more emotionally, physically, and mentally exhausted than they have been during this year. School staff need the additional week to recharge and take care of themselves before returning to professional development and school days. This especially applies to teachers new to Holyoke and those teachers who are working summer school programs as their days this summer will be even more limited. The 2021-2022 school year will, will be different than this one, but just as challenging. School staff will be tasked with trying to close the academic gap left by the pandemic while also supporting the growing emotional needs of our students. School staff will need to be innovative with their scheduling, curriculum, and interactions to tackle this monumental task. Students have also been severely impacted by the pandemic. Instruction came for most of the year in the form of virtual learning, which was difficult for many. This summer, students need time away from the screens to recharge and to socially connect with family and friends. We realize that the district wants to get students back in the classroom to work on academics. However, one more week of summer will not significantly impact their academics negatively, but could have a huge positive impact on their mental health. Lastly, almost all families have been impacted by the pandemic. Stresses have been coming in all shapes and sizes, financial, childcare, health, et cetera. Families have had to make countless adjustments and sacrifices during this year. One common sacrifice made by many families has been spending time with friends and family who live both near and far. This summer is an opportunity for families to reconnect with people who are important in their lives that they have refrained from seeing for the safety of our community. Some of these events and trips have been planned for many months and announcing the school calendar in April did not allow families to schedule these important events appropriately. Families also need consistency and the early start date would increase the chances days, the chances days off due to heat, as happened two years ago. It would be difficult for families to start off the new year scrambling for childcare and teachers to establish routines and procedures. As members of our school community, I know that you are aware of everything mentioned above. We ask you to reconsider the calendar for the 2021-2022 year based on the difficulties of the last year. We understand that changes sometimes need to be made. However, wait until the following school year when families have begun to recover from the effects of the pandemic and when appropriate notice can be given. Sincerely, Marcus and Carrie Humber." Then, the next one that I received is from another parent, Marissa. Bruce Haber. I hope I said it right. Um, I guess some feedback from, I have a first grader with ADHD. She loves science and hands-on learning and has had a hard time stating and gate, staying engaged during remote learning. And my husband and I feared her having difficulties in the first grade classroom even before the pandemic began. I know that the older kids have the pathways program to get engaged in hand-on type learning opportunities, but what is available for the younger ones who learn differently? Is school choice an option for her if Holyoke doesn't have a hands-on STEM science-type outdoor education available so she can reach her full potential? That was our second, I'm sorry. So, those are the two that we received, um, for public comment. And I know that we'll, we will be discussing, um, the calendar later on in the, in the agenda and also, I believe, um, curriculum base, right? Mr. Soto, we're going to be talking about the summer programming or something? I can't hear you. You're on mute.
Sorry, we didn't, we didn't have, um, summer programming as, as part of the agenda for, for this, up, for this time around.
Okay.
But it is something that we could discuss at the next meeting.
Okay, great.
Let me know, Anthony, when you want me to share this.
On Mildred's call.
Oh. So, really quickly, I know we're moving on to the next, uh, which is communications and reports, and I just want to give a quick report on my behalf. Just want to make everyone aware that I have issued my own personal statement on my own social media page in response to a comment that was made by a board member from the elementary and secondary education at an April 18th meeting. The comment that was made was based off of a recommendation from, to, for the commissioner to refrain from, um, placing other districts into Level 5, so kind of using the accountability system, um, for the 2020, 2020, 2021 school year. This is not a topic for discussion. It's not a topic for comment. If you are interested in knowing what exactly was said, by all means, you can watch the video that is on the DSSY site for the April 20th meeting. And if you want to know what my statement is, you can check my social media page. But that is all for that. We cannot move forward on discussion of this at all. So, I apologize for that. So, we are moving forward on to, okay, student reports. So, Dean Campus students' requests to speak. Is that, are they here? Or are they here?
Mr. Gates?
Mr. Gates.
So, um, yeah, I, I had heard that there were Dean Campus students, but I, that was all that I heard. I did not, I was not aware of any students, um, that were coming here to speak this evening. So, um, if they're not here or present, then I believe, I don't know where that came from, but there was nothing that I was aware of.
Okay. So, I do know that after I will be getting, I will be requesting a report from Ms. Burks on the update for the committee on, um, the graduation activities for Dean and Holyoke High. So, I know we'll get some information from that, but I do have a question, um, from Mr. Sheen.
Yeah, I guess I'm just wondering where that came from then. I know it was on the, I believe it was also on the last agenda, like it just, I mean, it just seems odd. Were there two weeks of miscommunication or? I mean, I just wonder how agenda items got put on that, that, I mean, they were put on somehow.
Right, yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure if there's more information.
That was directed towards Ms. LaFave, I think.
So, they had requested a couple of months ago to come before the school committee because it was about Dean students having their own identity and they wanted to have their own graduation. A graduation committee was formed and, um, I received interest of who would have liked to participate on that, um, from the board. From there, we, um, I appointed Ms. Burks to it as she had done a phenomenal job with last year and was very involved with the, um, 2020 graduates, um, the class of 2020. So, I know that there were still some pending questions, um, from the students and I believe I had seen some other, um, questions that they had about senior activities and they really wanted some answers. So, this was kind of like the platform for them to, um, you know, um, I know that they are happy that they're going to have their own graduation and be celebrating it with their colors. So, I guess it's my own miscommunications and, um, I should have maybe reached out to Mr. Gates. So, I apologize, um, that's on me. But if they do want to come, Mr. Gates, at any point, um, by all means, they are more than welcome. Just let me know, um, so that I can put them onto the agenda and make sure that we give them their, their time so that they can speak, speak to us.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Ms. LaFave. And we, they appreciated having the opportunity at the last meeting, so.
Okay. Thank you so much. And again, I apologize for the, for the whole mess, mix-up. So, I guess we will then move on to Mr. Soto with the superintendent-receiver reports.
Thank you, Mildred, Ms. LaFave. And on that, you know, previous topic, I think, uh, the reason no students are here today is, is because of the good work that that committee has been doing, um, with Ms. Burks. We have involved a lot of students and I think the, the Dean Campus has been doing a great job with communicating everything that's been coming out of those, uh, those committees. So, they're, they're probably likely satisfied with, with some of the communication that has come from Al Gates and his team around year-end activities and graduation. Before we get into, uh, everything that's on the first slide, uh...
I'm trying, Anthony.
You can put it up, please. I did want to give the, the committee an update included in your, in your packet. We did provide an update on the middle school, uh, building. Had some great news. We had a meeting on April 14th and, um, the MSBA had reviewed our statement of interest and invited us to participate into the eligibility period, which is great. It's a huge milestone for Holyoke. We had a, a ton of representation, um, at the meeting and I want to thank everybody who attended. We had Senator Vellis, Rep. Pat Duffy, our acting mayor, Terry Murphy. We had city councilors McGee, Lacy, Mike Sullivan, Peter Tallman, school committee members Mildred LaFave and Devin Sheen. And, um, I apologize if I missed anyone else. But we, we had about 14 people attend that meeting and, and it was great to see so many different individuals come out in support of the project. We all know how important this project is for Holyoke and what it means to our kids. So, I really just want to extend my gratitude and thanks to all of those that have been working diligently on, on moving this project forward. And I think this is a great, again, a great milestone for Holyoke in regards to us being able to get, um, a new middle school building and also move towards the, um, elementary, middle, high school, which has, has been something that we have been talking about for many years now. So, today, we're going to provide an update on the return to school. We will be talking, we'll provide an update on MCAS and standardized testing, our graduation committee and, and the, our graduation and, and the year activities, which we just talked about. And we'll provide, uh, an update on, you know, some of the health metrics that, that, um, that we regularly review. So, um, we, you know, we're happy to report that we, um, you know, we have about 55% of our pre-K to 5 students are in-person. And, you know, overall, it's been a huge success. It's, you know, I had the opportunity to walk a lot of our schools and welcome many of our students. And it's just been amazing to see, you know, uh, some of these students, some of these, uh, some of the students haven't, haven't stepped foot in well over a year, um, into their school. And by, you know, and, and by, by the fall of next year, uh, some students that are remote, it would be about a year and a half that they haven't actually stepped foot into their, their school building. So, it was really exciting to see, um, all of the staff, uh, returning to in-person, all those students returning to in-person. And again, we're in our elementary grades from pre-K to 5. We're at about 55%, um, and, and of those students, they're, they're going five days a week. Some of the challenges that we have had, um, as I mentioned the last time we, we met, definitely lunch and breakfast being six feet apart. That has posed a challenge, particularly at some schools that are, you know, that are above the, you know, our average is 55%, but there's some schools that are, you know, almost 70, 79% and other schools that just have spacing issues and, and smaller classrooms, which makes it really difficult to, to do breakfast in the classroom. So, uh, those, those were some of the biggest challenges, but definitely excited to report that, um, that we've been able to overcome those. And, you know, many of our schools are, are just doing, are, are able to accommodate their, you know, our principals have done a great job and teachers have done a great job just being creative with how they use other spaces, um, how they're using their cafeterias, how they're using their outdoor spaces, um, and, and just, it's, it's been amazing to see the flexibility that our staff have, um, have just been practicing to make sure that this can happen. And as everyone knows, the live streaming teaching has also been a, a huge challenge. So, we're continuing to, uh, monitor, uh, monitor that and talk to our building leaders and, and, um, any issues that come up, you know, and supports that we can provide to staff. We've been able to provide them. It was a challenge initially when we, you know, when we had less students in person, but it has become an even bigger challenge with, you know, more students in person. I mean, you know, at Sullivan, we have one class that, you know, has over 20 students in person and, and four that are remote and that, that's really tough to manage as a teacher. So, um, I just really want to commend those, those teachers and those paraprofessionals and there's those school principals who have been doing an amazing job, uh, dealing with these challenges and overcoming them so that we can welcome back our students, uh, to a much more traditional, uh, school setting.
Really quick, did you want to take questions at the end? Or somebody has a question now for clarification or how do you prefer?
If anyone has a question, they can, you know, um, you can let me know, Mildred. I'm not monitoring the hands, raised hands.
No, I did see that Mr. Sheen did have a question. Mr. Sheen?
Yeah, thank you. So, what schools are actually serving breakfast in the morning and who's not?
So, there's four schools that are sending it home. Metcalf, Ian White, Lawrence, and Kelly are sending it home. Um, and we've, you know, we've, that's been successful. We, you know, we still have our, our feeding sites available for pickup, but, um, we haven't had any complaints. We, you know, if, if a student does show up and they're hungry, we, we make sure to feed them. But overall, that's been a, a really good success in terms of being able to do that. But the rest of the schools are, are, you know, they're, you know, they might not be as at capacity as some of these schools and, or, or their space isn't as limited. You know, Lawrence is one in particular, like I think it has the, not I think, I know for a fact that Lawrence just has, uh, tiny classrooms. Some of our classrooms can fit, you know, 28 kids, um, in terms of the square footage. But Lawrence, that's not one of the, you know, it, it'd be difficult to even get 18 students at three feet apart over there at Lawrence, just how small the classrooms are.
And I also saw, oh, go ahead, Mr. Sheen.
So, all the other ones you didn't list are serving breakfast in the morning, whether it's the classroom or an alternative space?
That is correct. Yep.
Okay.
So, and, you know, evidence, I, I use that, that first grade at Sullivan is a good example because I was able to go over there, uh, the first day and it, there's 20 students. So, um, what they, what they do is they take half of those students and they're, they're eating breakfast in, in the cafeteria and the other half are eating in their classroom. So, they split them up in the morning, uh, to take attendance and, and, um, do what they would normally do during breakfast in the classroom. And then, uh, after they're done eating, I think they go to their specials and then they come back together for the rest of their classes. So, you know, real, like I said, our staff are just being really creative to make sure that we can. And then the rest, the other classes are able to do it, um, you know, either using, are either in the classroom because there's enough space to do it or using other spaces in the building. But right now, only Metcalfy and White, Lawrence, and Kelly are sending breakfast home. And I'll, I also wanted to state that, um, dinner and, uh, snack is also going home with all of those students as well, all of our students.
How are those schools, I mean, are they doing lunches in the cafeteria? Are they doing lunch in their classrooms in those schools that aren't doing breakfast?
Um, they're doing lunches in, in their classroom and they're utilizing other spaces. But during lunch, they have staff to be able to monitor that. It's, it's a challenge to be able to, um, and you can have enough lunch periods in the day to be able to accommodate that so that, you know, it could be that half of the classroom is going out to recess and the other, the other half are staying in the classroom. It's difficult to do, uh, early in the morning, all at once. You know, at lunch, you can stagger. Uh, it's difficult to do, uh, early in the morning, all at once. You know, at lunch, you can stagger your lunches, but, uh, breakfast, you know, re- first thing in the day, you know, we, we just don't have enough staff uh, to be able to monitor that many students if we're sending some outside, sending some other places, um, at, at these particular schools. Um, again, many of us, many of our schools are doing it, uh, but these particular schools based on their unique, um, you know, their building and, and the amount of students that are in person, uh, it was just too much of a challenge to be able to do that in the morning. And, um, the next slide is, is, I think I've, I think I already covered this, but really wanted to thank our teachers and paras. Um, we've asked so much of our teachers and paras and our school leaders, um, we've asked them, asked them to do so much that they haven't done in the past, use, you know, new technology, new strategies, um, in some cases disinfecting, uh, enforcing social distancing and other protocols, engaging students differently. Um, and it's just been amazing to see and, and some of our principals. I mean, I'm, sometimes I'm on the phone at like eleven o'clock at night with a principal, uh, dealing with, you know, a, a communication around either a COVID positive or a close contact issue. So it, it, it's, I can't stress enough how, how amazing our teachers and paras and all of our staff have been, um, in rising to the occasion and, and making sure that, you know, everything that's thrown at them, that they've been really flexible and, and, um, and been able to step up to the challenge in support of, of our students.
Mr. Soto, I thought I put myself off of mute after Mr. Sheen, but I guess I was talking to myself again. Um, but I did see Mr. Wellahand's hand raised. Did you, did you have a question that you wanted to ask now or did you want him to finish the?
Let me ask it now real quick. Uh, thank you. Uh, thank you for the update, Mr. Soto. Um, just kind of looking at the demographics for the children between, um, um, pre-K and fifth grade. Um, you have a chart, um, the number of, uh, students that are learning, um, in person versus remote. And, um, you have the breakdown per, per school. So really the ranges are pretty consistent. Um, like, um, some of them have half are in person, half remote, and then sixty, forty, seventy, thirty. Um, the only school that's sort of, um, the opposite is, uh, Kelly's school. Kelly has seventy-one percent of the children, uh, learning remote and only thirty percent in person. Is there a, a reason why that one's like, uh, the opposite of the trend?
Um, the, I mean, I don't, I don't have a, it's not a specific science, but, um, unfortunately, based on, you know, all of the outreach that, that we have done as a district and that, that school has done, um, that's just the amount of families that are choosing to, uh, come in person. So we didn't just take the information from the survey, um, and, and take it at face value. Our, our schools did a, a really good job, like trying to get a hold of families. It just so happens that, um, that, that in that particular neighborhood at that particular school, more families are choosing to stay remote. Um, I don't, I don't know why that is.
Um, it's sort of weird because I mean, like, that school, I heard there was challenges with the, the computers and the Chromebooks and the access for the, um, uh, remote, remote learning. So I would assume that that school specifically would, would, um, would be encouraging their children to, um, get back to, to the classroom. So I'm really surprised, I'm really surprised that it's the opposite of, of the trend. That's all. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I, I don't think that that percentage is an indication of our efforts to get students or in person. I, 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 you know, we, we really, I think all of our students benefit. We, we've all, we all recognize and, and have seen that remote learning just isn't, isn't optimal for any, for most of our students, not just our Kelly neighborhood. We really want our students in person. Um, so I'm, I'm glad you pointed that out. Um, Mr. Wellahan, I, I, I saw that as well and that was alarming to me and, um, you know, we, we, we have been having conversations. That's a, that's definitely an area where we can continue to do outreach. And, um, if we can con- convince more families to come in person, um, there's definitely the, the space available to do that.
Thank you.
So I know I have Mr. Sheen. He also had another question, but I just kind of want to just make a comment in regards to that. Um, I just want to remind, um, individuals that we also have to take into account that people still do not feel comfortable, um, sending their students back to school. Again, to them, the pandemic either may have touched their homes, may have touched their lives in a negative way. We also have to look at the fact that there, we also have some families where the student is being raised by grandparents. And when their grandparents have health conditions and that's all they have, we can't risk for them to lose their grandparents, um, from, from COVID or anything. And, um, so it's all factors that play into it. It's, um, so I just want everybody to be mindful of that, um, and understand that. I'll be right with you, Ms. Tensley Williams. I did say, um, so I'll, I'll get to you in just one minute. So I just want to make sure it's, there's a lot of factors as to why, um, students are not going back, even if they are struggling uh, with internet connection or really understanding or being fully engaged in, um, in remote teaching. Um, so I know, Ms. Tensley William.
Uh, yes. I don't know if it's a, a private situation. Has anyone reached out to the parents to see exactly why they don't, um, you know, want the kids to come in person? I'm not saying they should, but has anyone tried to find out how come?
Um, yeah, our school continues to do that outreach. So, um, you know, that, that is something that, you know, thank you for raising that as an issue. It's something that I, that I definitely noticed. We have continued to do outreach at this, at the school level to try to, um, get more families to come in person. Um, but I'm, 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 I'm going to look into that even, even deeper because that is an alarming, you know, statistic and it, it's an outlier. I mean, most of our schools are, are at least above or at fifty percent and, and Kelly's not. So, um, I appreciate you, you know, your concern because I had the same concern. Uh, but we have been assured that the, you know, between the family engagement team and the administrators and teachers over at, at Kelly, they have been doing a lot of that outreach. I'll be happy to, to provide more details on, you know, whether, you know, how much of that was actual positive convert, confirmation versus not being able to get a hold of, of the families. So I'd be happy to bring that back to the committees.
Thank you, Mr. Soto.
Um, so Mr. So I just want to make sure that if you, if you do receive confirmation that it's that families are choosing that we're not going to turn around and try to, um, kind of like push them to change their minds to send their students back, um, because the Kelly numbers are not, um, up to par with everyone else. Again, each ward, each school has its own unique
Yep.
um, differences and, and challenges. And we have to be respectful of that and culturally sensitive to that. So, again, find, see if it maybe could be that you can't get a hold of them. That's one thing, but if you can get a hold of them and they're adamant and do not want to send their kids right now, um, then we have to be respectful. We, we have to respect that, that choice. Not make them feel that they're making a bad choice.
Sure.
It's health comes first, health and safety. Um, the next, I see Mrs. Brunel's hand up.
Yeah. So one of my questions was kind of, and we might not even begin to know the answers to this yet, but looking ahead towards September. Um, because I know it's like it says right here in the biggest challenges is it's hard for teachers to live stream with only one teacher in the classroom. And, you know, having students in the building and it's basically they're on their computer. They're on their computer. They're not getting the kind, the same kind of instruction that they used to get. They're not even having to use a, a pencil and paper. So, you know, come September, do we think that? I don't know that we can say we, that people will be required to attend in person. I'm assuming Desi will probably make that, um, a requirement. But as a district, Mr. Soto, if you just know, you know, are we starting to plan ahead for September and like, you know, are our kids going to be sitting in front of a computer all day still while they're in the building?
Yeah, we, um, we're planning for a much more traditional setting. Um, the, you know, based on the guidance that Desi has, has released and, you know, uh, what, all the conversations that we have had uh, with Desi, you know, starting April fifth, we had to have families choose either one or the other. Um, not a hybrid model. And, you know, in conversations with them, when you're on a webinar, um, all signs are pointing to like, part of the reason that, that is being done is because we need to start getting ready for, um, to get first of all, to get our students back now, but also just start getting used to going back to school and, and it, it doesn't sound like, you know, that's going to be an option for, um, you know, for us to do like some sort of hybrid model. Uh, we will, you know, we will be discussing, you know, what, what's going to happen if we have a lot of families that are choosing to either homeschool or, you know, inquiring about some sort of remote model, um, that is, that's, those are conversations that we gotta, um, start having. Uh, we're, we, we have a meeting with, um, there's a commissioner's call tomorrow where we expect um, to get some information on what we're going to do with high schools. And, you know, little by little, we, we're also starting to get some more information about next year. But, um, I think that, you know, we're, we're planning on just receiving students next year in person. And I'm hoping that, you know, the majority of our families feel comfortable enough. Um, I hope that, you know, the, you know, more people are vaccinated and, um, you know, we, we, we learn more about this vaccine and get this under control and, and get to a point where we could just go back to school normally. I know that that's what we're planning for. Um, I'm not sure, uh, at this point, you know, what, how we're going to handle if a family is choosing to either homeschool or whether or not we're, we're going to have a remote model. That is something that we gotta start having conversations about with, at the district level.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Soto. Thank you, Ms. Brunel. That was it for questions.
So the next slide is about, uh, middle school returns. So, um, many of you are aware that today our middle schoolers um, came back, um, and, and again, uh, it's, it's like the first day of school for a lot of our students and, and some of our staff who, who, you know, um, who haven't been in their classroom, um, since the beginning of the school year. Uh, it, so far it's been a huge success. Um, I think that one of the things that really worked out well for us was that we started the middle school campus learning center, uh, model earlier. I mean, uh, we, as a district, we could have, uh, went with the state guidance and, and just started middle schoolers on April twenty-eighth and, and stayed in a remote model, but we, we didn't think that that was the right thing to do. Um, after we, we looked at our academic data and our middle school off-track data, and we really wanted to make sure that those families that wanted to come into, uh, wanted their children in their buil- in their buildings, um, with, with staff and to get used to going back to school. We wanted to make sure that that was an option for them. And I think we benefit, we benefited from that greatly because a lot of students were able to uh, start developing relationships with staff and get to know their school. You know, some, some students are in sixth grade and are, are, you know, stepping into that, that school for the first time. Some of the biggest challenges were very similar to the elementary, uh, in that, um, live streaming is very difficult. You know, especially with one teacher. Um, and then we also have some challenges or are planning for some challenges around small group instruction. And, you know, how to make sure that all the protocols are, are being followed and disinfecting is happening when, when there's transition. So, uh, again, a, a huge shout out to the staff because, uh, so far we've been able to overcome all of those challenges. Um, and the students that want to be in person, um, started today. And we have about, want to say we have approximately three hundred and ninety students in grades six to eight. So that's about, um, that's about, uh, forty, forty percent there of our middle schoolers, um, are re- returned today. Uh, and will be, will be in person five days a week. The next slide just shows our, our student demographics. So you can see a breakdown. Um, in pre, in pre-K to five, we're at about one thousand four hundred and sixty-eight students. Um, that represents about fifty-seven percent of our, uh, pre-K to five students are, are choosing in person and the rest are remote. Um, you'll see that our, in middle school, we, like I said, we, we, we're, we anticipate about three hundred and ninety. We haven't collected the, you know, that, that's based on who, who said they were going to be showing up today. And then, uh, preliminary high school, we did survey for high school. Um, and we got about three hundred and, uh, forty students that are choosing, um, that are choosing i- in person. So that brings us to about twenty-two hundred students, which is about sixty-eight percent of our total student body, um, which is great. Really, really good that we're able to get our, our students back in person. Does, um, anybody have any questions on middle schools?
I didn't have any hands raised. Uh, Ms. Tensley Williams, did you have a question or a comment?
No, thank you for asking.
No problem.
Okay. So as far as high school goes, as you all know, we, we didn't get any guidance from the state on, um, you know, similar to how, how we got guidance from the state on elementary and middle. We haven't received that from the state yet, but my guess is that tomorrow at three o'clock or two-thirty, I think the call is that, that's when they're going to let us know that the guidance is going to be coming out and what it is. But that hasn't stopped our high school from planning to, to, um, come in person. We had a survey initially, it was going to close last week, but we extended it to so that it's going to close on, uh, April twenty-eighth. And so far we have about five hundred and sixty responses. Um, it's pretty much an equal s- split in terms of the, um, how many of those responses are from Dean and how many are from North? I think fifty-three percent are Dean, forty-seven percent are North. Um, but overall fifty-nine percent of, of, of the students that responded are choosing to come back full in person, five days a week. Um, which is great. Sorry, which is great. Um, and, uh, we don't have a definitive date, but we are considering May tenth, uh, being able to at least get started and stagger, maybe start one grade at a time. But a, again, that'll, you know, tomorrow's conversation with the state is really going to dictate, um, what we have to do. Uh, my, my sense is and what I'm hearing is that, um, May seventeenth could be a, a date as well. So it was either going to be May tenth or May seventeenth. Uh, that, that, you know, those were the dates that I keep hearing thrown around. So our, our approach was to make sure that we were ready for May tenth. Um, we've had the highest response rate from the tenth grade students, about thirty-three percent. And the lowest from, from our twelfth graders. So only fourteen percent of our twelfth graders responded to the survey so far. We're going to continue to do that outreach, um, and, and try to get as many of the student, you know, try to get as much data and information from students and families on who's, who, who wants to come back for in person so that we can make sure we're ready. Uh, but again, we're planning to do something on May tenth and, uh, we have a cabinet meeting tomorrow and we have a, a meeting, a, a webinar with Desi tomorrow. And both of those meetings are going to be critical. So, uh, in, in terms of like solidifying. And both of those meetings are gonna be critical. So uh, in, in terms of like solidifying what are, what we're actually gonna be doing. But we're gonna be ready. Either way, um, the school day is gonna run a full day. Um, the class schedules will remain the same. Uh, they're, we're gonna try to limit transitions to uh, about three per day. Uh, breakfast, what, what we had discussed with the high school team and what they think is best is to start breakfast. And, and have a grab, grab and go stations outside uh, before school starts. And then also utilize out, outside spaces and alternate spaces in, in terms of inclement, if, if we have like rain or. Or we're unable to eat outside. Um, but the, the high school is putting together a really good plan on what that could look like and, and try to do as much of that outside as possible.
I see Mr. Sheen has his hand up.
Yeah, ju- just back to where we're looking at the enrollment numbers. Um, do you know, off the top of your head, the difference in enrollment from about a year ago total? Like what's our district enrollment today to compare to a year ago?
Yeah, I wanna say it's, it's down by a hundred and twenty-nine students. That's our industry, that, you know, that's our foundation enrollment. I know that Devon, but as you know, foundation enrollment isn't equivalent to. In district, but it's about, it is, uh, it is somewhere around there, about a hundred and thirty, but the biggest. Drop in enrollment is in grades pre K and K. So the majority of that drop is pre K and K, which makes sense, you know, um. You know, uh, uh, families that haven't started school yet. Given this pandemic are like, you know what, I, I wanna keep my four-year-old, five-year-old here. Um, I, I, I don't wanna take that risk and send them to school. So we saw a significant drop in enrollment. In those two grades in particular.
Okay. And then um, you were talking about the high school, this, the possible return. Um, back either the tenth or maybe the seventeenth, depending on where that falls. Can you tell me more about this limiting transitions and to three and? What this will look like as part of the school day? Because I just, I mean, obviously, the high school schedule is much different than. A re- a diff- another school schedule. So can you just kinda tell me more about that? Cause I don't think, I mean, our next meeting is until May seventeenth, so we'll be.
Yeah.
We, we will potentially be open by the time that comes along.
Yeah, I'm gonna ask if you could let uh, folks from the uh, high school team in to be able to answer that. So Lori McKenna.
Because I guess, uh, uh, they're coming in, I guess my concern is kinda what Mrs. Brunel was bringing up before, if it's just. Kids sitting in homeroom on a computer, having their classes sitting on their, in their computer, just doesn't seem like something I'd love to do. Um. If I was in high school.
Yeah, um. Can we let uh, Dr. Mahoney, Lori Dennis and? Um.
Yep, I have everybody with Lori Dennis. Here she comes. They are all in.
So don't all speak at once. Um, I'm not sure if.
So I, I could jump in on the dean campus. Uh, just the, the limiting transitions would uh, be norm- normally you have. Um, kind of a six to seven period day. Uh, we'd be looking um, at, at. Running a schedule where there's uh, four periods. Um, and also uh, uh, you know, on the dean campus, kinda relocating. Um, some classrooms, so they're right next to each other by grade level. Um, just so, you know, there's not eight or nine transitions uh, in the course of a day and maybe three or four and. And really just like turn, you know, we need to turn the bells off and just work on um, you know, transitions happening. Uh, strategically by grade level, so.
And at Hoyok High School, we have um, we redid room assignments um, to plan for grade levels pretty much being on floors. So all of our third floor will have our freshman students, all of our second floor will have our tenth grade students. And then our eleventh and twelfth grade students will be staggered between rooms that are left on the first and um, second floor. Um, we currently do have a um, only four blocks a day and we're gonna keep that same. Um, schedule. So it will be um, pretty much four transitions, uh, two blocks in the morning. Students would go to lunch. Lunch would be by their uh, floor, um, designated spaces in the building and outside the building. And then they would go in the afternoon to, to two classes. So it would be um, pretty much just one floor and unless it's an elective for each grade level. And then just the, the four classes throughout the day.
And then the, I would just add to Mr. Sheen's uh, concern about. Uh, sitting in, in just doing Zoom while you're in the classroom. Um, we have uh, with the support from the city and, and the, and the technology department purchased um. A considerable amount of swivel camera um, setups that will allow. Um, our teachers to be able to move through the room with the, with the uh, kind of a robotic camera following them. And they'll be mic'd. Um, so they won't be anchored to uh, to the camera on their laptop or on their desktop. Um, for uh, for uh, teaching the kids who are remote at that time. That definitely has a learning curve to it. Um, and um, you know, we, we'll be looking uh, once we have guidance from the state. Um, we'll be looking to uh, name uh, several uh, blocks of time where we can do some of that tech training. Um, for our teachers, but it's, it's uh, um, it won't require anything. New except, you know, donning a microphone uh, by the teachers and making sure that the um. The camera that will follow them and, and their microphone is uh, is turned on for their classes. So hopefully, we'll actually be able to do live streaming in a way that um, schools that haven't had that uh, technology. Haven't been able to do just yet.
Yeah, so I, I guess I'm m- more curious about what I asked. So will students? Be transitioning to different classes or are they gonna be, so if I have math class first period, I'm going to my math class. If I have. English class, my second period, art class, my third period. It's not just gonna be in homeroom. Having class in homeroom. You are actually gonna be going to your subject teachers.
Yes, yeah.
Okay. All day.
Yeah, we actually, um, uh, Lori, correct me if I'm wrong, but uh, I believe that um. Mr. Maldonado, Mr. Gonzalez went to, did they go to West Springfield High School today?
Yeah, um, two of our um, admin team went to West Springfield to see how they did it and they, they did transition um, from class to class. Um, and they just kind of looked at how they um, did things and it flowed very, very well. They uh, there was. Even the movement on the, in the hallways, if it was on the same floor, if a student was going from one class to another class on the same floor, and actually. They did not have to, it was two-way traffic because there was so few students in the building and it allowed for that. Um, the only time there was the transition, um, one way was on the stairs. So we're looking at our plan that we've already developed, just to kinda make some tweaks. Based on the visit that they had and um, some of the things that we can get a little bit smarter about um, seeing it in action with students in the building.
Okay, and then I, I know that Mr. Soto had, had mentioned this just with response rates, but what were the response rates again? Um, for high school, was that a slide? I didn't know if that was a slide. I didn't see it in our packet. I don't know if you were just. Kinda telling us because you're still in the middle of surveys, but like, where were we again with, with high schools?
We, we had five hundred and sixty responses. That represents about um. You know, half of our. Let me see how, help me out here, Mahoney. I know that.
I'd say, I'd say Anthony, that's about forty percent of our, of our. Um, and um, we'll be, we'll be doing a full court press in our squad, our advisory class on the north campus tomorrow. So we anticipate that number increasing significantly. Um, uh, uh, tomorrow, we, we launched this survey two days before spring, spring vacation. And so we just. We wanted to uh, give folks a little bit more immediacy uh, to it.
And of the fifth, I, of the five hundred and sixty, uh, Mr. Sheen, um, about fifty-nine percent of them. Are choosing in person.
Okay. And then, I mean, I know you are kinda going back and forth with this guidance, like from the state and everything, but there are. I, I mean, there, there's high schools back. I mean, so if the state says the seventeenth, are you gonna plan for the tenth? I mean, it's just. I, I, I know this is coming tomorrow. If the state says that twenty, like, uh, we can kinda take a moving target and it, it goes. Around and around, but I mean, is there, i- is the tenth the date? Is that what we're, because we're, we're less than a month. We're way less than a month.
So if the state says that the seventeenth. All students that want to have to be in person and remote no longer counts. Then we'll be able to go, we'll be able to start May tenth with a phased-in approach. Right? So we, we, we could start with, you know, Mahoney, I don't know what grades, cause we're gonna be talking about this at cabinet. But we could start with like seniors first or freshmen first. Um, one day, kinda like what we're doing at Dean and then go the seventeenth uh. In person, but have them ha- like start kind of a hybrid in-person model the week before. But if the state says that May tenth has to be the day, then May tenth has to be the day. We can't do that. Transition. It has to be all at once. Um, Mahoney, I'm not sure if you wanna comment on that.
No, you captured that right. I, I, I think that initially, right now. Um, the plan on the north campus is to start with the seniors and work. You know, work, work, work their way down uh, to ninth grade and then have everyone back on that Friday. Um, the, the, the fourth, if seventeenth is, is the go date, have everyone uh, back on the fourteenth. And I, and you know, north remains the, the larger of the, of challenge for the two, uh, only because we've had. Uh, anywhere from, you know, seventy to eighty-five percent of our dean students have been on campus at least once a week. Um, and so are very familiar with safety protocols and expectations and. Um, and, and that drill, as are uh, the majority of staff. So um, you know, I think that, that um. Uh, north campus is the place where we, we're, we're spending a lot more attention to getting faculty and staff and students ready uh, for that return to school.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have Ms. Brunel.
Yeah, sorry, I'm not on camera. I'm driving my kids to their class. Um, so to Devon's point about this being on screen. Um, so even my daughter's transitioning classrooms. So that's not really, I think, the point. It's more, what are they doing in the classroom? So all the lessons are on the computer. Um, everything is on the computer. So though they're physically moving classroom to classroom, they're not having that same in-class experience that we did pre-pandemic. So that, that was the point I was trying to make with kids getting off the computer, not necessarily just the transition piece. Um, so there, you know, I just wanted to make sure that that's being emphasized because. You know, Dr. Mahoney, and I'm sorry, I can't think of the woman's name right now because I don't have my screen in front of me. Um, you know, you guys were emphasizing that we're gonna have the kids transition and the new camera technology, that's great. But do we still expect the kids that are in the classroom to have a laptop in front of them? And that that's how they're doing all their lessons, right? So it's basically, you're still on the computer whether you're in the building or you're at home.
Yeah, well, I, I think that's a really interesting uh, um, uh, area for us to, to be exploring. Not only through the rest of this year, but as we move forward. Uh, one of the things that, that. You know, i- if, you know, a silver lining, if, if, if anything, or at least a, a place where we've learned is that. Um, teachers have really figured out how to use uh, digital resources to support student learning. Um, so, you know, instead of passing out papers, I mean, kids can access the same articles. They, they've learned how to text code. Um, I think.
We don't want the kids to be on screen eight hours a day.
Right, so I, 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 I don't know if they'll be on screen. There's an opportunity to do breakout rooms and to organize a breakout room so that. The four of us who are in the classroom are in a live breakout room together, doing work together, doing collaborative work together. Uh, there's an opportunity for teachers, when they're doing one-on-one conferencing, to actually do live conferencing with the student. Uh, during the classroom and, and as opposed to doing it online. Now, given if there's a whole class conversation. And, and students are debating, you know, the, the original intent of the constitution and the framers. They'll be online because some of the students, uh, it looks like it could be, you know, maybe forty or fifty percent of their classmates. Will also be online. And so that, that, they'll have to be communicating both through a Zoom. A- as well as to the kids in the classroom. But I, I do think that we anticipate students will be less, less online. Than they are less married to the computer than they are now, but that they will be needing the devices. You know, throughout the whole of the class to access the curriculum material.
Okay, so. I think currently, they're on their computer just as much when they're in school as is, as if they were home in my dining room. So that's something that I think, obviously, I understand why, cause there are students from the classroom that are remote. But it would be nice to start transitioning away from that. It would be nice to see some. Math assignments being done in a workbook or, you know, for the kids to need to use their penmanship once in a while, right? So, and even come September, when we are hopefully fully in person. Like just because we now know how to use all this digital technology and all these resources, like. I don't wanna see our district relying on technology come September. You know, it's great our kids know how to use it, but they need to know how to write with a pen and paper. They need to know how to use a cow, you know what I'm saying? Like, we can't. Just rely on all this technology now because we have it and it's user-friendly. So I'm just hoping that we're being conscious of that and, and the, the role of screen time and. You know, again, I understand there's plenty of kids, for whatever reason, are still remote. Therefore, the teachers being divided between teaching the students in person and the students that are on the remote. So I understand, I'm just. Being conscious of the fact that we are still very much on the screen and being conscious of transitioning away from that. As a district, not just high school.
Sure. Yep, a hundred percent is a, I think that's a concern for teachers as much as it is for, for, for families and, and uh. Uh, and parents and, and kids.
Thank you, Ms. Brunel. Mr. Wellhand.
Well, thank you. I um, just wanna welcome uh, Mayor Murphy to our meeting. That's all. Thank you.
Oh, thank you very much. Um, Mr. Soto, did you want to? Continue? I don't have any further questions.
Great, I think that brings us to the next part of the agenda, which is um, MCAS. And I'll ask that um, you allow uh, Valerie to, to come in as a panelist as well. Um, so as far as an update for MCAS goes, um. What we, what we're gonna be doing is we'll, we'll, we'll have a remote option for MCAS for grades three to eight. Um, if families, you know, most of our remote learners, you know, they weren't comfortable with. Uh, the families weren't comfortable wi- with sending them in. Um, so you know, there, there is going to be. An option um, for us to be able to administer MCAS remotely for grades three to eight. Uh, we're gonna be using. A browser-based version of what's called the Test Nav system. Our IT department right now is working. Uh, just to make sure that all of the Chromebooks uh, meet the requirements for that test, test nav sys- uh, nav system. Um, and uh, the state's also, you know, the guidance that they provided is they'd like to see. Um, some monitoring. So even though some students are gonna be uh, choosing to, to take the, the test remotely. Uh, we gotta figure out a way somehow for us to be able to monitor them uh, while they're taking the test. Um, and then uh, s- some guidance that was released earlier as well is that the class of twenty-two, so this year's grade eleven. Um, the competency, competency determination has been modified so that they'll no longer be required to pass the MCAS. Or EL, in ELA or math in order to graduate. So that's a good thing, but they'll still be able to, they'll have the option to take that. Um, because it. It could affect um, them being able to qualify for, for scholarships like the Adams and the S- Stanley. Uh, Coplick Certificate of Mastery. Um, and then, so we, we do have, again, on, on Thursday. April twenty-ninth, we do have a, a training that Desi, Desi's gonna be uh, putting on. Um, as it relates to uh, MCAS testing and, and we have many of our. Administrators are gonna be attending that training. It's gonna be this Thursday, uh, April twenty-ninth. administrators are going to be attending that training. It's going to be this Thursday, uh, April twenty-ninth. Val, did you want to add anything to that? Uh, we, we, other than the dates on the next slide?
Uh, no, I think that a lot of the questions that I can anticipate are going to be similar to the ones that we have, which is how are we going to manage remote testing? And so we're hoping to have a lot more information after we attend the training on the twenty-ninth, which is this Thursday. Uh, we, we do know we've began to coordinate with Matt Kozmaskas and the IT department. Uh, today, Dr. Curtis sent out um, a checklist, just kind of uh reiterating some of the action steps that we have to take to prepare for MCAS. And um, we, we know that the in-person assessment will be ready to roll with. Uh, we're going to spend the most of our time uh with our leaders trying to figure out what this remote uh assessment option looks like. So we'll have more information after we attend the training. That, that's probably where most of our energies are going to be focused on, since that's the, the largest change. Um, if there's questions uh around um accountability or some specifics around uh how this, it looks for grades three through eight versus the high school, uh, the high school staff can help uh talk through some of their planning. Um, and if you have questions around accountability, we can answer that as well.
I have a couple hands up. I think Ms. Brunel just couldn't take her hand down because she's driving, but.
No, I re-raised it, but thank you.
Sorry about.
So am I first?
I guess you are.
Thank you, my Dan.
You're welcome.
Um, so I just, um, questions about opting out and uh what do we intend to provide as activity for those students that opt out? I know that there is a formal process to opting out of MCAS and I've heard from a lot of parents with concerns about MCAS this year and they don't even want to put their kids through the stress of taking MCAS. So what is um the opting out options look like?
Yeah, so we'll, we, I mean, there's not a formal opt-out process. Um, you know, uh, student families can, they're probably likely still, some are going to likely choose to not send their kids to school during testing um or uh not let them test, but um we'll, we'll make sure that we have some asynchronous learning opportunities during those days um, in case things like that have come up. I, I know that that's what we're doing at the high school. Valerie, um, do you want to add to that?
Uh, yeah, uh, Mr. Soto is correct on that. There isn't an official opt-out. Obviously, parents have the choice uh to, as they did with any year, to um not have their child attend school during an MCAS testing session. Uh, the test has been significantly reduced, so it is only one session for ELA, one session for math, and then in grades five and eight, at the grades three through eight level, uh, one session for, for science. So it's half of the, the test that uh it would typically be. Um, I think before people opt out, they really need to understand how many days of testing and not just these windows, because this is the, these are the windows that were allowed to schedule individual grade levels at the school levels. And so classrooms aren't testing this entire time. Uh, they may have one session of ELA and one session of math in grades three through five, uh, three through eight. Um, and it could be any one of these days. It wouldn't be the full day either. So um, just want parents to be able to have that information and know what the actual testing uh schedule looks like for their schools, so they can make uh decisions that make sense for them and their, and their children. Um, and yeah, just, we're obviously, we want students to uh participate if they're in person in school and we honor families making their decisions on whether to participate or not.
So I can speak for my family, will be opting out and taking an absence certainly won't be an option. So we'll have to find an activity for kids to do in the classroom because they're not going to simply not go to school because they're not going to take the test.
Question.
Uh, we certainly have uh students who have opted out in the past and there is always uh something that the classroom teacher has arranged for them. It is sometimes in a different location because the students are testing, but that's something that the schools are, are uh familiar with having to, to provide.
Right. The reason I'm bringing it up is because of COVID, right? So we have to, like, if they're going to a different location within the building, be planning ahead for that. And, you know, as far as the formal process, I thought a parent just had to, like, submit a letter to the, to the school, right? So that was all I meant by say a formal process is just making your intentions known. Um, but, you know, like you said, it could be as simple as moving the child to a different location within the building and giving them an activity. But during COVID, you can't just intermingle, so that's something to be, I don't know, start planning for and preparing for, I guess.
Yep.
So I would say that once the schools have their uh schedules, that families would, we, we do want to keep uh accurate records of who's um, quote-unquote, opting out of the test. So the schools would need to know and have that in writing. There's not a formal process beyond that. So as a parent, you notify in writing the principal, uh, and then we'll have to determine what happens from there with, with the students on an individual, school-by-school basis. Um, if the numbers are much larger, we do need a lot of staff in order to proctor the exams, particularly with the social distancing. So um, we'll, we'll just have to plan accordingly once we know what those numbers look like by school.
Question. Thank you. Yeah, I'm Ms. Tensley Williams. I got you just. I have two other people that had their hands raised. Um, but I, I definitely have you down, um, that you have a question or a comment. Um, the next, the next person is Mr. Sheen.
Yeah, so for remote students that are using that TestNAV program uh for MCAS administration, how do you, do you know yet how you deal with accommodations? Not like if you have a student that gets everything read, will the system, or is the pro who's on Zoom going to have to be doing that?
Uh, we, we do not have discrete details on that yet. The uh TestNAV system is the same as it would be if they were in the building. It's only web-based at this point, so um, they do want uh teachers to be proctoring still and keeping an eye on them remotely through video conferencing. And so we, we plan on, uh, that's one of the questions that we have written down, actually, around that, and we're hoping that they provide clarification on that during the, the training on Thursday.
Okay, and so I'm assuming then there'd be a group of teachers, like administrators on the virtual, on TestNAV, and then a group that are proctoring in the classroom. You would never have someone doing both, right?
Correct. Uh, it would be near impossible to proctor both. We, we would have to split staffing.
And I'm assuming it's almost like one, when you're proctoring on TestNAV to a student, since you have that nation with Zoom.
Right. So we know one of the things, like, we already know, like, some of our uh networking should be able to handle, our devices will handle the TestNAV. Uh, we know that connectivity might be an issue that we want to make sure that we uh run through some trials before we open up live testing. Um, one of the other things would be, how are we managing staffing of both the remote testers as well as the in-person students who are testing? So uh, those are all the kinks that we're going to have to work out pretty quickly. But uh, our IT director has uh asked that we schedule as far into the window as possible, not right at the front end, so that we can work out some of these kinks through some smaller trials at the school level.
Yeah, I guess I just wouldn't want to see what this remote option, kind of what happened with last year with AP exams that everyone went in to take the first day of AP exams and crashed the entire system and had to retake them globally. Um, and I mean, knowing that this is very similar software um to that, that would be my only concern. I wouldn't want to be the ones crashing the entire system uh at the same time. And if like, I mean, I would test if a Chromebook could really handle Zoom and this system all at once, because it seems like it would be a lot.
Those are some of the questions we have, and we know that we're already stretching our, our bandwidth uh with the number of Zooms that we're running now uh because of our, our learning model. But the IT department is working on uh expanding that and have, have put out some guidance to us already around, you know, kind of optimizing our, our system. And so uh, that team is well aware of the, the challenges that are going to be coming up. And I'm, I'm pretty sure that they'll be journey, joining us on the training on the twenty-ninth as well. So we'll, we'll make sure to have some planning time um after that with the right, right, right folks. So Dr. Curtis has already been in contact with Matt Kozmaskas. The three of us have been on uh email exchanges, Dr. Curtis and I have been talking about it. Um, and again, after Thursday, we'll have much better formed opinions and actions around what's next.
Yeah, and do you have concerns, especially with the bandwidth, considering that the, I believe, looking at the testing window that was set up is almost a carbon copy of the testing window for advanced placement? I mean, i- is there any concern that you're running these two very data-heavy um, programs uh during the exact same time? Um, with it, because advan- I think AP is right around that same, same time remotely, correct?
There is right now, Devon. Um, but on what, the, the issue we're having with bandwidth right now has to do with our firewall. Um, and we, on, on Wednesday are going to be updating, so starting at four o'clock, our, you know, our, our network is going to be down and we're putting a brand-new firewall in, which would, would help with some of the bandwidth issues that we're experiencing right now. Um, so, and, and I think the part of the issues that we ran into in the past was, you, you've heard Matt Kozmeskas, uh, his name brought up several times. Um, he hasn't been as involved in the past with, with what the plans were and when we were doing them and how the um, you know, how the trials were being run. But uh, as you can see, Valerie and Tiffany have been in real close communication with him and making sure that this, this time around, he is very much involved. Um, and, and you know, that's the area of expertise that he brings to make sure that we're, you know, we have the, that he advises uh Valerie and her team and Tiffany and her team um on scheduling so that our network could, and our, our network and our devices can support um this testing.
Yeah, so when you're on a district device and you're a student and login, does that run through our firewall, even if you're at home a- and bounce back? Is that the, the process, or are you just on when you're home on yours?
When you're home, you're on, you're on your own.
So it's not authenticating read-through the district?
It runs through our web content filter.
Yeah.
Not, um, but not through our firewall.
Yeah, then I would even hope, like, for those days of the AP exams, that if we aren't a hundred percent sure that those students that are taking AP exams won't have interruption because of MCAS being administered, that maybe those can be remote learning days for those students to take those at home, rather than taking them at school. Uh, if they're in-person students, I just, I, especially knowing like the, I, I mean, I think knowing some of the pressure that students are also putting themselves through for advanced placement, that it might just give a good learning environment for some, if, if home is a better learning environment than at school, especially those interruptions could be there.
Yeah, that's a good uh suggestion. Devon, we'll, we'll have to get, uh, Valerie, can you make sure you ask that question? Because right now, we can't, um, that's not something that we, you know, that, that instruction wouldn't count towards student learning time.
Um, absolutely. I also.
Given the current guidance, so we're, we're going to have to ask them if they can make an exception for that.
I also know that the high school is being really thoughtful around their planning around MCAS and staggering who's taking assessments when, and I'm sure that they're thinking of the AP uh exams as well during that time. So um, we'll, we'll continue to try to monitor and make sure that we're not overcrowding uh assessments all at once. But I'll, I'll jot that question down and make sure we, we ask it.
Thank you, Ms. Burks.
So I basically have three questions. Um, one is, how will accommodations be met for students that are MCAS testing um that are choosing to stay remote? So how is that going to happen for our special ed students? Would be my first question. I don't know if you want me to slam all three.
I would say that those who require the most accommodations can, uh, we're hoping many of those uh choose to test in person as possible, so that we could uh meet their, their needs. Um, and other than that, uh, we, we are still in the problem-solving process. But we absolutely want to make sure that those uh account, uh accommodations are, are our top priority in, in making sure that they're met. Um, well, we need to learn more around what that looks like for remote students. A lot of times, um, we can make the, the assumption that we may be doing some individual assessment. That happens in person anyway. We'd have to set up uh the same type of process for those who are testing remotely.
Okay, so it's basically still something that's in progress. Um, and then another question. So I know Aaron touched upon um students that are opting out of MCAS and making sure that they have educational space. So I'm guessing I could be wrong for kids, like, special ed students who are on portfolios, when they, other students are MCAS testing, like previously, they've been offered time in different areas of the school. So I'm guessing that's the same kind of concept you guys are going with, correct? So it would be why other students are MCAS testing, um, kids that are opting out or kids that have portfolios. You know, they go to alternate spaces and given alternate activities. Um, so that would be my guess, right?
Uh, yes, absolutely. So students who are on the portfolio, who do portfolio assessments, uh, schools already have a system of, of how they are provided with appropriate uh educational opportunities while the rest of the students are testing. Uh, again, the testing isn't like we shut down everything. It could be grade levels, certain classrooms, other classrooms uh would continue to run as is. So that's something we're used to planning for, so that's probably the easiest thing we have uh to think about with this uh test administration window.
And then my last one is last school year, um, you know, due to COVID and all of the, you know, new things that came out in regards to graduation, one of the issues that we did run into is that although students met course requirements, you know, um, some shouldn't have been issued diplomas because they weren't really where they needed to be in order to graduate. Um, and special ed students, you know, that was also in the mix of being given diplomas. I just want to make sure that we're really being mindful um to make sure that we're setting kids up for the best um possible outcome. Um, I'm worried that just because the state's saying, if you meet the course requirement, you don't, you can still attain um a diploma. I just want to make sure that we're setting kids up, that they're really ready um to be able to go out, join the workforce. Um, you know, obtain, you know, higher education. I want to make sure that, that we're really mindful to make sure that these kids are ready and we're not just doing it because we're able to in a pandemic and to make graduation numbers look better than they actually should. Um, so that's something that's a concern area for me, um, especially because of, you know, some of the things last year that we learned. Um, but those were my three questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Burks. And um, we certainly uh are putting some additional uh checks and, and um processes in place to ensure that, uh, obviously, all of our goal is that our uh students are ready to succeed beyond their high school career in whatever they choose, whether it's career uh training or uh moving on to college. So we, we um, we share that goal with you and we also uh will refine and have refined processes to ensure that we don't um run into the same situation that we did, that you mentioned. So appreciate you bringing that up.
Thank you, Ms. Burks. Ms. Tensley Williams.
I'm, I'm going to sound redundant now because some of the questions that I needed to ask have probably been answered. But I just want to say, with the students not being able to attend school normally for the past year, now the ones that are opting out, how would this affect their grades? Now, when you say opt-out, do you mean they don't, they're not going to take the test? But, or does it mean they'll take it at a later date? Because I don't want the kids to have to pay for it to um repercussions because, you know, they opted out and didn't take the test.
Uh, so the, the, the required, you're right. So there is no technical, formal uh opt-out. We, we can't condone that. We know that parents make their own decisions about their, their children's with, with the testing. And some do uh have their children opt out. In grade levels, other than uh those who would need this for graduation, so particularly grades um three through eight, it is not, it does not impact their grades. So particularly grades um three through eight, it is not, it does not impact their grades. At the high school, it does not impact their grades either. It impacts the awarding of uh meeting the competency determination. To receive their diploma. So it is required to receive a passing score on the high school assessments. Uh, the earlier slide showed that this year's 11th grade students will not be, that, that has been waived for them. Uh, due to the fact that they didn't have an opportunity to take the assessments last year. This year's 10th grade students are required to take it. 11th grade students can take it if they want to. Qualify for scholarships that Mr. Soto mentioned earlier. So it does not. So the short answer to that is, uh, Williams is that it does not uh impact their grades or final grades. It does impact the high school competency determination for 10th grade. And so we highly, highly hope that the, that 10th graders are not opting out of the assessment.
Okay, thank you. I just didn't want the kids to be punished in the long run. So you, you answered it. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Tensley Williams. I have, there are no more further questions. Oh, wait, somebody just raised their hand. I'm sorry. Uh, Mayor Murphy.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, just uh in terms of this, this test, MCAS testing. I mean, I'm gonna make an assumption and that we can't expect most of these students to come to the level. That they ordinarily would have been in a non-COVID year. So are we using this to determine or to assist us in determining programming? Additional instruction, extra tutoring so that we can catch up? And I mean, how long are they doing the, this MCAS testing? I know you got a month there, but I'm sure they're not doing all of that for a month. Uh, so I, I mean, is that, is that the rationale for doing this rather than just starting intensity with trying to provide more instruction?
Uh, very good question. So this year, the state is saying that they are not, they're holding accountability levels where they are. So the MCAS test will not negatively impact our accountability ratings at all, which is one of the uses of, of the assessment. The other is to see how the, does the state does on a whole with um assuring that students are receiving high quality instruction. And able to meet the, the, the standards uh at each grade level assessed. This year, the assessment is going to be used as one more uh. Group of data, formative, formative data to allow us to see how we're doing. And use this to design instructional programming for next year. Now internally, while that, that's an important. Uh, met metric and we can see how the state was doing and how, how we compared with that. More importantly, our internal assessments and our internal um screeners that we are developing. And uh have, are, are currently working on having a assessment calendar for next year. That quarterly has us taking quick hitting assessments that are embedded in what the students are learning. It's in their curriculum. Uh, or their screeners at the younger levels that help teachers more timely, in, in a more timely way. Uh, design instruction that meets their needs and helps us accelerate and close the gaps. So this is going to be one data point that we can use along with our internal data to drive our instructional planning for students.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Murphy. Um, Ms. Brunel, you have your hand raised again, correct?
I do. I do. Um, I mean, it's no surprise how, you know, everybody knows that I don't really support standardized testing. But to Mr. Murphy's point and then your counterpoint like, I mean. It's, it's just so irrational to, to have any weight in a standardized test. When these kids have lived through the worst year of their life. Um, maybe lost a family member, um depressed because they haven't been seeing their classmates in a year. Um, maybe they're not eating well. God knows the problems that these kids have had in the last year. And it doesn't take a standardized test to tell us that our kids are not all where they should be. You know, we have teachers who spend hours with these students on a daily basis who can tell you whether our kids are where they should be or shouldn't be. So this isn't to the district. This is just MCAS overall. And the fact that our state puts way too much emphasis and way too much other points that we decide on. About how these kids do on a standardized test. A standardized test does not tell me all of the wonderful things. That my student is able to do and accomplish. It tests simple points that somebody in Desi decided at some point in time. That these are what the kids should know. I mean, it's just not a relevant measure in my opinion. And then to hear, oh, next year is just gonna be built in to have, you know, more timely, efficient assessments? Like, I'm sorry, what happened to a spelling test and a chapter test and a math test? Those are the daily assessments that our teachers are providing to our students on a daily basis. And all this pressure that we put on our students to do well on these standardized tests is absurd. And I really do hope that, hope that the legislation gets passed to do away with this. So I don't need a rebuttal or anybody's comments on it because, you know, I understand as a district, we have to do it. And I understand what we do, but it's just not right.
Thank you, Ms. Brunel. I have no further questions or anybody asking a question.
Great. Um, the next portion of the agenda, we're, we're, we're gonna provide an update on graduation and end of year activities. So um, the last meeting, we mentioned that we had surveyed uh students. And we were in the process of forming a graduation committee or had already formed a graduation. And end of year activities committee. So what I've shared in this slide deck is. The results of some of the cer- of, of that survey. So at, at the Dean campus. Um, what we had was uh thirty-three of our seniors, which represents about eighty-nine percent of our seniors at Dean. Responded to this survey. Um, and seventy-three percent of those uh seniors responded. That they want to have a separate graduation. Um, I think the ones that were in favor of, you know, of, of having a joint. Uh, uh, but more traditional graduation where, where it's one campus. You know, a lot of them were, you know, athletes that want to be with their teammates and um might have a sibling. Uh, uh, at the school or a best friend that was at the school. But oh, overwhelmingly, the, the, the senior class at Dean. Um, seventy-three percent were in favor of separating the graduation. And then we had another hundred and twenty-five uh non-senior students. Uh, they were closer to seventy percent. Um, saying that the district should consider separating the graduation. And then faculty and staff, we had about twenty-three respondents at Dean. Uh, there was only one staff member that responded that we should in, that we should do a joint uh, a joint graduation. And the other twenty-two responded that uh they think we should separate. Uh, at the North Campus, which is the next slide, we had about twenty-five percent of our seniors, which is about sixty-six student. And again, it, it's over seventy percent of them had, had said that they would be in favor of a separate graduation, not a joint one. Um, and then seventy-nine non-seniors uh had, fifty-eight percent of them had, had responded. That uh they would want to separate. And then the faculty at staff was pretty much split. We had twenty-two uh faculty and staff at the North Campus. Um, respond to the survey and, and over fifty-five percent um had responded in favor of separating the graduations. So um, based on all of that, uh, we, we did, we are deciding. Uh, we, we did put a graduate, again, we put a graduation task force together. I, on this, this slide, you can see. It's made up of four seniors, two Dean and two North. Uh, we have four teachers, so two at each campus. And four uh parents of seniors, two at each campus. And we, we did have a, a representative from the Board of Health. I know that it, it had been mentioned that earlier in the process, they weren't showing up, but we, we were making sure that they were kept in the loop. Uh, we have a school committee representative and Ms. Burks, who's, who's been amazing in, in making sure this stuff is moving forward. And then obviously both of the principals are involved and the, the high school's uh family engagement coordinator as well. Has been involved in this process. Um, so there were about three to four meetings that, that were had with, with the full. Uh, task force. And then each school had their own individual teams that they were, they met at least twice as well. Uh, so there's been several meetings around this and um, you know, the recommendation was. Again, to separate um the, the graduations, which is, which is what we're gonna be doing. Um, and then on the next few slides, we have uh some of the cross-campus things that we're doing as, as one campus. So the senior car parade will be, will be done uh on May twenty-third from nine to twelve. So again, that's, that's both campuses together are the, it's not gonna be two separate parades. Um, we're gonna be doing that on May twenty-third. Uh, following the parade, we're gonna do the, the Gary Rome car giveaway. Which we've done the last couple of years. Um, on Friday, May fourteenth, we plan on doing the. You know, we're in the process right now of printing all of the lawn signs that, you know, represent whether, you know, if you're a parent of a senior. Uh, so we'll have Dean, Dean will have their unique lawn signs, the Dean, the Dean campus will. And then um, the North Campus will have their own separate lawn signs, but we plan on distributing those on May fourteenth. And then um, the banners, so we're gonna be doing pictures uh starting April twenty-eighth. Or it's gonna be from one to six. So for, for those seniors that haven't had their pictures, pictures taken yet. Um, on April twenty-eighth, we'll have the opportunity, to have the opportunity to get their pictures taken so that we can have. Uh, the banners similar to what we had yesterday. I thought that was a beautiful sight to see. Uh, driving down North Hampton Street, just watching all of, you know, having each individual senior have a banner. I thought that was really awesome. And we want to make sure that we continue to do that. Um, and we plan on hanging those uh May twenty-second. Uh, as for, for graduation, as I mentioned, the overwhelming, the students, uh, especially the seniors. Um, over seventy percent chose to have separate ones. So we do plan on having um the North Campus. Have their graduation on June sixth at one P M. Um, we haven't decided when the graduation rehearsal is gonna be. Uh, but class day is gonna be June fourth. We'll have breakfast in the morning and then class day right after that. Um, and then cap and gown day will be May fifteenth uh from eleven to two. Um, we had a, an interest, a, a good meeting today with the Board of Health. And um, as far as capacity goes, uh, you know, as, as long as we're able to. Uh, do the graduation outside. Uh, each senior will be able to, um, will be able to have three uh family members or guests attend. So we, you know, we, the Board of Health went to both sites and they specked out based on the, the square footage. And the space available um outside, that they can separate pods in uh, in, in groups of three. Six feet apart, which, which is, is great because that means that each of our seniors will be able to invite three of their family members. Um, and that's, that's new information. We just found out today at the, a Board of Health meeting. Uh, the, the, I think there is gonna be a meeting with the task force tomorrow. Um, where, where Sean um Ora Designey from the Board of Health will be wa- uh discussing that with the, with the committee. Or with the task force. And on the uh Dean Campus, so we plan on having um uh Dean Tech Beautification Day. So um, you know, thanks to Rebecca and, and a lot of the senior, seniors that had expressed, you know, wanting. You know, wanting this to look nice. You, you think about how beautiful it is, the Holy Okai um field, the, you know, with the turf and all of that. Uh, we want to make sure that, that uh Dean students get to experience something similar. So on May eighth. At nine in the morning, nine to twelve, uh, there'll be a, a group of volunteers and folks from, from our team, from the HPS team. And DPW helping um to make sure that that field looks really good uh over at Dean. Uh, we're, we're definitely making some improvements to the gym area as well in the event that we do have to go inside. Um, there's some painting going on, but uh, you know, everything we're, we're trying to do is, is make sure that we can have it outside. Um, because that's where, you know, that, that's where we'll be able to get family members. Um, and we'll be able to do something really nice, I believe, for the, for the seniors in both campuses. So cap and gown day is gonna be May twenty-second from eleven to two. The Marquion uh Memorial Tree Planting Ceremony. Um, yeah, I do wanna. Stress that this is, this is gonna be a very private ceremony. It's not something that's gonna be open to the public or anything like that. Um, the family really wants to make this a, a, a family event and we want to accommodate those wishes. So um, that, that event will be on June first, uh, three thirty to four thirty at the, at the Dean Campus. Uh, breakfast and class day is gonna be June second. We haven't decided on the times. And then there'll be a barbecue and rehearsal on June third, eleven to two. And then the graduation is June fourth uh at five thirty P M.
So I do have um two people with their hands raised and I'm, um, Mr. Sheehan.
You, you can go to Mrs. Burks first. She works in the committee. I don't know if she has stuff to report on it as well, but I can wait. My question.
So Ms. Burks, do you want to give your report and update now, add to what's been said?
Um, just have a couple, you know, comments and things to add. So I have to say that the, the task force that was put together is an absolutely an amazing group. Um, of people that genuinely are trying to listen to students. But I will say in regards to our HPS staff, like honestly, above and beyond. Um, would be two of the words that I would use. You know, for our principals to all come together and do an emergency meeting with me to answer all my questions. You know, at, in the evening, you know, at dinnertime. Um, and we were on doing a Zoom, trying to make sure that all of our. Ts were crossed and our Is were dotted. Um, I don't know if people really understand how far above and beyond. Um, they're all going. And then, you know, the teams that are working directly on the graduation. Committees for each school. Um, it's absolutely amazing the amount of work that they're doing. So, you know, I have to, I want to acknowledge that because they're doing an amazing job. And they're really trying to be mindful of both campuses. In regards to Dean's Beautification Day on May eighth, we're really hoping that the community is gonna come together. We're hoping that elected officials will come out um and get their hands dirty. These students are trying to own their school. They're trying to be proud of their school. Um, and they're trying to really prove that they are their own individual school and their identity. Um, and their staff is really, you know, backing them. And this is like a student choice in a student-run event. This is not something where an adult came up with this great idea, you know, let's do a beautification. This was the kid's idea. Um, but we really need as a community to come out and support these kids. They need to see our faces, working with them hand in hand, um, pulling this off. Um, it's really important. It's important that they feel supported because for a long time they didn't. And they've really found their voice to vocalize that um recently. And so I really want, I'm really hoping that as a community, we can really come out and show them love and support. Um, so bring your gloves. It's gonna be May eighth um from nine to twelve in the Dean Campus. And we're gonna get our hands dirty and we're gonna show these kids a whole lot of love that they really need um from our community. And then one other really important thing in regards to graduation, the Dean Campus has reached out to Mrs. Williams. If you are listening, um, the Dean kids have tried to call you. They're missing you. And they want your poem for their yearbook. So they really need you to get in touch with them. So if you could please, Ms. Williams, um, because they do want your poem in their yearbook and.
Alrighty. Um, I, I will definitely get in uh touch with them. And I was going to ask a question. Um, if Mr. Soto or someone could email us with all of the dates that he just mentioned. Uh, that would be very helpful. Uh that would be very helpful.
And last but la- not least, the one other thing that I do wanna say as a thank you. I gotta give it up to Anthony on this one, um he's been a hundred percent supportive of these kids. Over the years, we've had lots of superintendents and receivers and people involved. I honestly, like, I've always kind of been involved and had my nose in the Hoyokai Public Schools and trying to do stuff for kids. But I I don't think I can say I've ever had somebody so receptive of listening to these kids' voices and what's important to them. Um and Anthony, like, I can't thank you enough for the work that you've done in regards to this. Because even the small miniscule things that you're supporting them, like, it means the world to them and it shows. And you're giving them their pride back um and you're giving them the capability of standing up for our district. To prove that that we don't need to be in receivership, that we are a strong district and a strong community. And you're giving them the strength to voice that um by by all of your support. So I just wanted to say thank you for everything that you've done thus far. So that's it for me, guys.
Thank you, Miss Burks, um. Uh Mister Sheehan.
Rain options, any?
You had to say that, right?
I mean, I I just have to ask, I mean.
If we all just do the rain dance the day before, like, we should be good, right? If everybody just does a rain dance and and prays, uh no, uh you know, uh uh this is, it's interesting you bring it up. Because um so if we do have to go inside, um that that means that we we likely not be able to. Have any guests, especially at the North Campus. Um the Board of Health is suggesting that um instead of, instead of having like, you know. Having it inside, that we have an alternate uh uh date, like a rain date. Um I know that the the, you know, the high school, the high school uh leadership is not in favor of that and thinks that. So um there's gonna be a meeting tomorrow and that's probably gonna be the biggest part of the conversation um that that the task force is gonna have. Um because I I the the Board of Health is, you know, strongly suggesting, or they were this morning. That um that we don't have it inside, that it it be outside and if it's it's if it's raining, that we have a rain date. Uh I had a conversation with Mahoney earlier today and um, you know, they they'd much rather, you know. Not not change the date, so uh that's gonna be a a good conversation that's had. Um and I'm looking forward to the uh the conversation and to uh to Miss Burks and Mahoney. And and what they're gonna recommend collectively as a group after they have that conversation tomorrow.
But Devon, rain dates are really hard in the sense, nobody ever really wants to call it. And then if they call it and it's a mistake and blah, 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 so great, like, we, I talked to the Board of Health. Um also in regards to what do we do if it rains and basically it's, you know. It's either a rain date or it goes on in the rain, those are the two options.
And and I get that and I I know that, like, I mean, every year, it's this kind of juggling thing that we've dealt with. And that's why many years ago, we moved graduation from, I think, four o'clock to one o'clock, which is hoping if there was a late afternoon storm. But even if we could have, I mean, I understand that moving it inside probably isn't gonna be an option. It's hard when there's no COVID at all. Um but the fact that we are now, um we're more than a month away. And we're, we have the ability that we have students' photos and then we're getting new photos with the banners, even if something. Um virtually could be produced and pivoted to that day with just the platform party and airing it on Hoyokai Media and using the virtual pictures. Just something um that's out there to to and still allow the, I I mean, be I'm sure it could be amenable to the Board of Health. Health, if it was the people normally on the platform, the valedictorian, salutatorian, the class speakers, to provide something just to a camera. Uh in a setting, whether it's the Hoyokai Auditorium, Hoyokai, the Dean Cafeteria. Um though I know there's some issues with being live at Dean unless you're in the Fight Field Room. So like, let's think of some of those thing, if we can think of some of those things now, if we have to make that quick switch for that Friday or that Sunday. Um and have to do something different, um because it was um this past August, I mean, it was great, like, we were hopeful. We're like, we're gonna be able to do this and then it was not the case.
And then we got soaked.
As we all know, like, we were trying to hold umbrellas over the diploma people and, I mean, it was just, it it got, it it was a. It was an unfortunate experience, especially after everything our families had gone through. Um so just if knowing that a date probably isn't possible, if we can at least have some sort of virtual option to pivot to. And can can we not bring the diplomas outside and have them get all wet again this year? But but also like, so and and to Mrs. Burks, Mister Soto, like, I will absolutely be there on um May eighth. For the Dean Beautification Day and and look forward to it, but I just think it it's and it's wonderful, the students wanna do that. And and I applaud them for wanting to do that, but let's just remember, there's never had to be a Hoyokai North Beautification Day to prep for graduation. So I I mean, let's let's keep that in mind, that we have a commitment as a as a city to have that. Uh facility ready for them on June fourth um and to be ready for them. So like, I i- if it service to the school by making your grounds and your property beautiful and to cleaning it up is wonderful. But and it's a good activity, but let's just remember that, like, for graduation, like, we have a commitment to have equal areas. And to have or in equitable areas that that we make that commitment to have it ready for them. And it's not just the the beautification, it it really should be two separate events, right? I mean, no one's asked to go and beautify Roberts Field uh prior to graduation.
So I don't see any further questions, but um in regards to the beautification, I do wanna say. The field right now, well, I didn't, I haven't passed by, so forgive me if I'm wrong. But when I did go there and when I did view where they would be graduating, it is nowhere near Roberts Field. Um if there's one area that's always been maintained, it's always been the Holy Oak High side, north. Um the Dean side has been left in the wayside. So when I was watching where they were walking um their field, it's. Very uneven, the grass had not been mowed, um the the fence is broken. Um the bench uh had probably one, one wooden piece to it. Was it, was it that, Miss Burks? Um and then there were a lot of branches kind of just intertwining into into the fence. These kids want to graduate on their field, they wanna graduate in in their school. And the least that we could do is make sure that their field is just as ready. As our Holy Oak High North field is ready for our students. I know that we don't go to get it ready and that there's other people. But the field at Dean Tech has been left. Just as it is and if if I can think of it, it's been like that since probably we decided to go into the. One high school, one city, one high school model. Um so it's been kind of, you look to the side and and it and it's not appealing. Now, I believe they were going to paint the poles so that they actually look black. Um versus all paint shift and and stuff like that. Um so it's just a touch up of mowing the lawn, picking up the trash that has been there. Um and keeps accumulating, getting rid of that, that bench that doesn't even need to be there cuz obviously it's broken. Nobody can even sit on it, um and fixing the fence that that's broken. So when the students come in, there's some, it's kind of showing some pride into their school. Um so that's where, I mean, they call it the beautification, I call it equitable. Mister, oh, I'm sorry, Mister Soto.
I'm sorry, uh I appreciate you bringing that up, but um, you know. I mean, it it's tough to make that Dean Field look, you know, it's it's not turf. But I can assure you, no, we've we spent more money at 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 the Dean Campus in terms of upgrading the facility than we have. At at Holy Oak High School in the past four, three years, for sure. Uh we we replaced the, they got a brand new gym floor, they have brand new lighting in the gym. Um we we replaced the stair treads throughout the whole building. Painting, beautificate, like, we have done a ton of work and I think a lot of it you have seen on our. When we, when we give you the Facility Summer Project List, Dean has been one of the schools that we've invested in. Over the last five years, um or three, three to four years, uh especially, you know, when we started to, you know. As enrollment started to increase, when we had the STEM uh the STEM School uh and co-location. We invested a lot of resources into making that school look good. Now, the parks outside, um you, yeah, you're right, uh I can, I can let you know that um. The our our school, our school playgrounds and fields are maintained by the city's D P W Department. Uh we pay the city seventy-five thousand dollars a year so that they can maintain our fields. And and, you know, I I I would assume that the process is um very much that they coordinate with the. The the Parks Department on what rentals are there, they coordinate with the Athletic Department if there's games. So as as many of you know, we don't have any high school games in that field. So I I can see where that has slipped through the cl- cracks, but it's not, it's not because we're not thinking about equity. It's just there hasn't been any sporting events there, uh but when there is a sporting event, we make a phone call to the to the city and let them know. And and they, you know, they're very receptive to helping us out and they, you know, um when when the, when that field is being used. You you can see when you drive by, I, there's this new sport out there that I I see being played on. Uh spike ball and kickball and they do other things, the city makes sure that, you know, that 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 field gets maintained properly. Um it's just that we haven't had, you know, athletic events or rental events in that space. Um and and, you know, but but I can tell you firsthand as as being. Um the leader of the Facilities Department, that we have invested more money into Dean and and making sure. That uh we upkeep that building mainly in on the interior, so I agree with you, the Roberts Field is beautiful. I mean, that was a, I I I don't even know how much uh fu- funding that was for the city to to get turf there. And to put the track there and to do that, but um i- it's beautiful, i- it's it's definitely something. It's it's a a jewel of the city, um and and that Dean Field is not that. But we we, I hear you and we'll make sure that we work with the city's Parks Department to make sure that that's. Um um addressed in the future and and pretty much everything that you talked about will will get taken care of before the graduation. The fence is already repaired, the trees, if you drive by there right now, there's uh all of the, we had a tree service go out. So all the the overgrown uh branches and stuff that was going through the fence, it's cut and it's there and it's waiting to get picked up. Uh but um we we're definitely aware of that and and this isn't just a one-day thing. This is just highlights that we gotta do a better job uh maintaining that field and and working with the city to make sure that that's happening.
Thank you, um before I had seen Miss Feliciano Sims um hand up. Um before the other two showed up, but then it went down, so I wasn't sure if she still had a comment or a question.
Um yeah, no, I was just asking uh for the beautification, is there anything, you're gonna post that on the face, on the H P S Facebook page? And then is there anything that the community could bring to help out, like um extra rates or anything like that? I was just curious.
We'll make sure um that we communicated on all of our social media platforms, on our website. Um we'll likely do a a call uh to the high school um to to high school families. Uh but if if you have any other recommendations, it once you see the communication go out, if you think that there's other platforms we should be looking into, please let me know.
Perfect, thank you.
Um Mayor Murphy?
Thank you, Minister Chair, so just two things, I wanna compliment uh what has been done in terms of the fence and the and the vines and shrubbery that were hanging. And it's it looks a a whole lot better in terms of being able to see into the uh to the area. Uh and I I'm not sure the total fencing has been repaired. I I I know there were still some gaps, I thought maybe they were done in the last day or so. But uh up until the this, the vines being removed have made a tremendous difference in terms of appearance. I wanna let you know, I am sending out an email right now to the Superintendent of D P W and uh the chair, uh the lead person. In terms of the parks, asking them to put mowing and correcting the Dean Fields on a regular schedule to improve the overall appearance. Uh so I'm hoping that, and the graduation was June fourth, if I'm heard correct. So I'm gonna try to make sure that they're knowing that and trying to make sure that they're trying to keep up. Obviously, they are, like many others, stressed out in terms of what they're being asked to do. But let let me see what we can do there and again, I think the vine removal has done a lot. I I don't know if what was left has been removed, but if they could take what they already chopped down and and move it out. I think that would also leave a better image, so, but I I wanna compliment you on what has been done so far.
It will be, thank you. Mayor Murphy, um yeah, it the what's been cut down will be removed and the 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 posts, the goalposts have also been painted already as well. Um so again, some of the work that uh Miss LaFave mentioned has been done. But um we just, we we gotta make sure we we do that regularly, I think, is the point and I hear you loud and clear.
Thank you, Mayor Murphy and Miss Burks.
So one of the points that I wanted, you know, that's clearly been made, is that that park is actually owned by the city. Um and it's the city's responsibility, um you know, and that hasn't been happening on the city side of making sure. That that park is taken care of. Um I know the D P W is short-staffed and all of those great things, um but these kids are a priority. If something was looking that funky up at the North Campus, that would have been taken care of. You know, we know that there's litigation going on in regards to the field, um the track up at the North Campus. And that's something that's actively being pursued by the city, but somehow this school and this, these grounds are just getting neglected. And that's not right, um we're asking these kids, these kids had a really bad reputation. That school had a bad reputation for a really long time. And we've got this group of kids and this group of staff that are rebuilding and they're building off the momentum. To make that school great again, um and they're asking us as a community to come out and support that so they can continue going upward. Um and I think that, you know, the city needs to step it up on the city side for making sure that those grounds are taken care of. When we're talking about the vines and a lot of the work that's currently been done, everybody needs to know that's due to Brian Harris and his team. Because Anthony asked them to step up and start making stuff happen for these kids so that these kids could see. That we're buying into them a hundred percent, just like they're buying into their school. So Anthony gave the order to have that started and Brian Harris and his team didn't wait for the city, didn't wait for D P W. Didn't wait for people to show up eventually, they just took it into their own hands and started getting the work done. You know, they called in contractors to come in and cut down trees and to do all of this work. This is stuff that the H P S is doing that, we're not getting support from the city. But heaven forbid, like, you know, city council meetings, it'd be quick to call us out that we're not doing our part. Um in reality, you know, the schools are the ones that are stepping up to do the job that the city's supposed to be doing and neglecting to do. Um so again, you know, people need to be aware of the key players in this game, making stuff happen. Brian Harris and his team went down and just started. making stuff happen. Brian Harris and his team went down and just started cleaning and going through everything. When Anthony says that some parts of Dean have not been neglected, um, and have gotten more work than other schools, Anthony, I love you, and that's true, but over a long period, you know, that was the school that was neglected. All of our other schools were getting finances, and yes, in the last couple of years, we started putting money back into Dean. But everybody thought, hey, Dean's the newest building, it doesn't need as much, and we let it lapse. We closed amazing shops that we need to start working on getting back open, like, there's a lot, there's a bigger picture with Dean, we are propelling Dean and they are moving forward. You know, they have the staff, they have the students that want it, that need it and are striving for it. Um, but in all honesty, yes, the gym's being painted, there's been new lighting and a lot of work has been done, but again, previous to that, we neglected that building. Um, and before we get into a spot that, you know, we have to do even more and we're looking at needing another school, which we all know how that went over. Um, we need to start really taking care of our buildings. Um, and this is a beautiful building and it's a beautiful school. And I'm hoping our current mayor will, uh, light some fires to make sure that we can get this taken care of for these kids and these staff and let them continue their momentum of changing their story of their school.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Burke, so you said some really kind words about me, but really the people that deserve the credit for this work happening is, you know, is, is the students voicing, you know, what they wanted. Uh, the, the building principals and yourself for advocating, I mean, I, I remember how, how upset you were when you called me and, and how passionate you were about wanting, you know, the students wanting this, so really, the students made this happen, you know. I, I have, uh, the benefit of having some really good employees that, that are responsive to our students' need, but, but, um, but they were the ones that spoke up and we made all of those good things happen because they spoke up and because you advocated for them, so they're the ones that deserve the credit. And then, you know, where we, where I feel like we needed to do a better job is, is, you know, I probably drove by, I drive by Dean every single morning. Um, and, and I didn't think twice about, you know, I guess I was just used to, uh, it, the appearance, the way it was, but, um, I, you know, we, I, I don't wanna sit here and say that the city's not doing what they need to do, because, like, we probably should have did a better job telling them that we needed that, right? Um, I, I, I think that the DPW has been a great partner, I don't think that we've ever called them and asked them for something and they said no, so, um, shame on us for not asking, uh, but I don't, you know, I, I don't wanna, I don't want them to take the, the full blame for it being the way it is. Um, we, we probably should have been more vocal, just like the students were vocal in expressing it. Um, and, and we were able to make some stuff happen pretty quickly, so, um, we, we need to do that a little better and, and we can do that through our students and, and our leadership at Dean. Um, you know, Al, Al's never shy, I think I got a ten-page email from him on things he wants done at, at the Dean Campus for next year, and we're, we're able to accommodate most of it, so. Uh, re- really, people advocating for, for what their needs are is, is how things get done. And we haven't advocated enough for, uh, to the city for, for the field to get, uh, maintained a little better, so, we will.
There are no further questions, but thank you, Mr. Soto, thank you.
Next section is, um, us just providing a, a, an update, um, in terms of all the health metrics, so, um, many of you know that on April 8th, after being in the yellow for six weeks straight, we did go into the red. Um, I think a lot of that has to do with, y- y- you know, I'm not, I, I'm not a, a fortune teller, or I can't predict why, but I would imagine, you know, a lot, people are just fatigued with, um, with all of these restrictions and the weather getting nicer and, you know, St. Patrick's Day and, uh, people just getting fatigued, we're start, we started to see a, a rise in, in the cases. Um, and, and the following slide does have, um, that information in more detail, so. Um, and we've been in the red ever since, so we, we get an update every, uh, Thursday from, from the state. Um, so we've been in the red since, uh, April 8th, after being, after six weeks in a row of being in the yellow. Um, all of our HPS counselors are being offered, uh, youth mental health first aid training. Um, it's offered through the Healthy Schools Grant Program in collaboration with DESI and with Pinnacle Partners. Um, nurses parti- participated in this, um, training earlier this year. Um, and our nurses, our, our nurses are also conducting symptomatic rapid testing if students become uh, symptomatic, um, or if students, um, if a pool test, uh, if a pool test ends up coming positive. We did start our pool testing on April 5th at, uh, the North Campus at Dean and at Transitions. Um, we, so, uh, the nice thing about that is we are, uh, I, I, I wanna commend, um, Mary Ann Courier, Cynthia and Alessandra uh, Graziani, who is kinda leading this effort. Uh, but really thinking outside the box, we're, we're utilizing our uh, nursing students over at, in the Dean Program to help with this process. Uh, the board, they're, they're not administering any swabs or dealing with the tests themselves, but uh, we, we utilize one of our own vans and we're, we have a partner that works with them. And we drive to the different sites, um, and the students help set up. If a student comes in to, to get tested, they take down their information. Um, and, most of the students can self-administer a swab themselves, but if they can't, that's where the vendor steps in and does that process, the students aren't involved with that. Um, and the state was pretty clear with us that they didn't want the students to be involved with that, but, um, in fact, they didn't want the students to be involved with anything, uh, regarding this pool testing program, but, um, they also didn't say that we couldn't do it and, and, you know, we were really passionate about creating opportunities for our nursing students and they all wanted to do it. So, um, I'm happy that we were able to accommodate that and, and do it in a safe way and get, get our students some real, real-life experience and, and help us with this pool testing program as well. Um, as many of you know, we, we had our second, um, clinic, uh, it was held at, uh, this past weekend at Dean, um, and that, that's where most of, of the people that got the first vaccination ended up getting their second one, so we, we, that's about six hundred people, um. Uh, I was, Devin Sheehan was able to go to the first time, uh, the first, uh, session that we had. Uh, I went down there with him and it was just amazing to see, um, you know, the Holyoke Health Center and our staff and, and the, everybody just coming through partnering and, and pulling this off, uh, for our staff. I thought it was really amazing. Um, so the, the next slide here, uh, is the, a slide that you're similar, so you can see that starting on April 8th, we, um, we went from uh, thirty, uh, average daily incident rate of thirty-seven point one to forty-four point six. And then, uh, the week of April 15th, that went up to forty-nine. Um, and our positivity rate, percent positivity rate went up from four point three-three percent, uh, on April 1st, all the way to five point five-nine percent. Um, so again, we continue to, uh, get regular updates, we're monitoring this closely. Um, and, and we all know that, you know, we, we have a very strict policy and process in terms of contact tracing, and we've been able to do a good job, uh, minimizing the spread. Um, as, as many of you know, right before vacation, we had an incident at McMahon and, you know, um, we, we, we took no chances. Uh, and, and we, we were able to, we, we, unfortunately, it was very last minute. We got phone calls late at night and didn't have an opportunity to do, to follow our process, which has, is, you know, we have a goal of staying in school, right? We wanna, we're, now that we're open and we're in person, we wanna stay that way. Um, so, on, on, that, that means that sometimes we have to err on the side of caution and, and, um, with the issue at McMahon, that's what we did. Um, and, um, you know, th- there could be scenarios like that, but we, we need to remain vigilant and continue to, to enforce and, and our, our process and to, to properly investigate each case and to make decisions on a case-by-case basis. So since the school year began on, um, April 14th, uh, we've had about five hundred and seven cumulative uh, cases, and that's through March 31st. Um, three hundred and seventy-nine remote students and thirty-six in-person students. And then we've had, uh, nineteen remote staff and seventy-three in-person staff. Um, not necess, this doesn't mean that there's school transmission and it's being spread through the school, most of our cases, you know, um, uh, it's, it's happening out in the community and then brought, brought in. But our process is such that when that happens, um, we're able to prevent, um, s- s- school transmission and widespread. Uh, total cases by month, um, we had, uh, about three cases in September, twenty-four cases in October, um, seventy-four cases in November, a hundred and twenty-three in December. Uh, January was a hundred and thirty-six, February seventy-four, and March seventy-three. So far in April, um, through the 21st, we've had, uh, seventy-five cases. Uh, sixty-four students, um, thirty-seven of them were remote and twenty-seven in person. And then, uh, ten staff, which were all in person. Any questions on that?
I don't see any questions.
That concludes our report for today.
Thank you so much, Mr. Soto, um, for your report, um. Let me just look real quickly at my agenda here, I'm sorry. Um, is there any new business? I don't see any.
I just have a quick thing to say if you're done.
Go ahead, Ms., Ms., Ms. Tensley-Williams.
Okay, I have good news, um. Finally, I did get in touch with the Library of Congress uh, in Washington DC, I spoke with them today, cause they had shut down. And I will be able to publish my poems, I've written eight. And so I got a sentiment book form and they said that they will copyright them for me. And that's about eight weeks from now, okay, so I knew you, you guys would want to know. Thank you, sweetheart, I love y'all.
Thank you so much, Ms. Tensley-Williams, so you just beat it to the announcements, but that's good to hear, congratulations.
Thank you.
We're very proud of you.
Thank you very much.
Um, so no new business, no ongoing business. Um, I do see Ms. Burke's hands up, but I believe you're for announcements, correct? So we'll move to announcements.
Okay, cause I have two more, just cause I don't shut up, um.
We can't even hear you.
Sorry. So if anybody has any connections to any seniors through Opportunity Academy, Holyoke High School or Dean, um, June Lavelle, the great June Lavelle from Holyoke Public Schools has started a Facebook page called, um, the Holyoke Adopt a Senior Page. So basically, students are putting their bios out and people from the city are adopting a senior, and it means you're sending them congratulations. People send gifts, people do all types of things, they rent box trucks with kids' pictures on it. Um, you do whatever you can to adopt your senior, small stuff, large stuff, but it's having somebody other than their family members, um, in their court and cheering them along. It's an amazing page, it's really cool to see the bios of these kids and what their plans are. Um, and basically, it's just to support them. So if you have any connections to any seniors, um, please let them know that this page is up and running on Facebook and we would love to have them on and to all of our school committee members, um, and general public. We would love for you to adopt our seniors, they need the support and they need the love. It's been a rough year, um, this was something that was totally amazing last year. Um, and we're hoping to reproduce it, it's just for Holyoke, though. Um, Holyoke students only, so any student you adopt is a Holyoke Public School student. And then the other announcement that I had, um, Jesus Pereira, who is, runs our Veterans Administration, is trying to get together the four thousand dollars, um, for his aviation plan to get kids to learn how to fly. Um, I know a bunch of us have connections and, you know, I don't know if there's like some COVID money laying around, Anthony or, uh, Mayor Murphy, but, um, you know, it's a great way to set, spend some of the funds that are available is being able to give these kids the opportunity of learning how to fly. Um, Jesus Pereira has been absolutely amazing when it comes to this city and looking for opportunities. Um, but this is a great opportunity for kids. And he's trying to raise the four thousand dollars to get this program started. So if anybody can support, I know there's a Facebook page, um, and he's trying to reach out to as many people as possible to kinda get this off the ground and get it flying, so. Um, if anybody could support that, that'd be great, but those are two things that, that I hope that people will jump in and get involved in. Um, just because they're important to our kids, thank you.
Ms. Burke?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm all in, I was in the Air Force, so I'm good to go, I'll help out financially.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sweetheart.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yeah, and I'm just wondering to Mrs. Burke, saying that if there's any opportunity, we could even look at, uh, Perkins Money and expanding some of our offerings at Dean around that, so whether how Westfield did, though, I will tell you, I would never be the one, uh, volunteering to fly the plane. I barely like to get into the plane half the time. Uh, um, what I was gonna say is gonna remind the community that, uh, many people probably already know, they get the alerts that Hoyoke offers vaccine clinics. Um, pretty often reach out to the Senior Center, uh, to reserve it, it's three-two-two, fifty-six, twenty-five, as well as there's so many other providers of, uh, COVID, uh, vaccines available, and I would encourage anyone that's eligible, um, including, um, any of our students as well to sign up for that, just because it's, I mean, we're, i- i- if you are able to get the vaccine, that's how we move forward and that's how we um, stay vigilant with that and, and stay safe, wearing our masks, getting the vaccine, um, and being advocates for that, uh, that process is, is how we're going to, um, move forward and get back to some sort of normal, so we don't have to discuss alternative graduation programs and, and being on your computer in the classroom and all those types of things, so just remember that and, and stay vigilant um, with that and keep wearing the mask, because, I mean, I was texting Anthony the day before the red numbers came out, saying, are we going in the red tomorrow, and it was just, it's, it's, we see it and people can't forget um, that we need to stay vigilant with it, so. Um, and everyone should have heard already that the Memorial Day celebrations have gone virtual this year, so hopefully people receive that and can join in on that as well, and I know we have a meeting on the 16th, but just thought I'd put it out there.
Thank you, Mr. Sheehan, Mr. Mayor Murphy.
Uh, thank you, and just a couple of other things, in, in terms of vaccines, obviously, the Senior Center, uh, any seniors that are, high school seniors, not the senior seniors that are eighteen or older can come to that and, and, and are certainly welcome, and I, we are also working with the Hoyoke Health Center and very shortly, there are gonna be mobile van vaccines. I know there's gonna be, right now, it looks like the first week in May, it could be at Veterans Park. We are also looking to do some in Churchill, then the Flats, and we're looking at other locations, but the Hoyoke Health Center is working and, and Sean Gonzalez is working with them, and we're trying to line up various locations. Uh, and, and they will have, what they're looking at doing is, I think, four different locations, two days or maybe three days, and each week, then go to a new location and then come back, so it's an eight-week program, so that people can get the first vaccine and then come back and get the second one four weeks later, so. Uh, that is just getting going and it looks like it's, it's gonna be starting in that first week in May, so. And again, I would encourage everybody, everybody that is eligible, uh, to please do what you can and, and, uh, take, take the vaccine and try to Take, take the vaccine and try to make sure that you're protecting your friends and your family and all the people that you're in contact with. Uh, as, as, uh, Committee Manchin has said, you know, we're all in this together. And let, let's try to make sure that we take care of each other, uh, both ourselves. Making sure no one else gets sick and then making sure we take care of our friends and our, our family, so. I just, and if there's others that come by, I'll make sure you're all aware of them, so, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor Murphy. Um, real quickly, Mr. Soto, um, the District Parent, um. Advisory Council, um, I did see on the Facebook that it wa- it was showing like if it was for last week. But last week was vacation week, so is it this week?
I don't have it on my calendar, so I'll have to follow up and, and make sure that we clarify. Uh, I, I was at one, maybe three weeks ago, but, um, let me get back to you on that, please.
And the same with the LPAC and, and I'll follow up with Ms. Courier. Uh, just wanna make sure that we always have the dates out there for the special education, the LPAC and the District Parent Advisory. Just so the other members that would want to attend and kinda hear, hear what's happening, um. Uh, it's, it's good to know, good information to know. Um, and before I'm even gonna ask for a motion, uh, to adjourn, we've gotta go back because. We didn't discuss the school calendar. I know it says information there, cause obviously it's just the school calendar. Um, but I do wanna make sure that we are acknowledging that we did receive, um, a public comment, um, from. Um, some parents in regards to the concern, so kind of just. Um, do people have any questions or comments in respects to the upcoming school calendar? Uh, Ms. Burke's?
Well, I do. So I've been getting a lot of complaints, um, not only from staff members, but also from families. The two main complaints are, A, we're starting way too early in August. If you look at people that are working the summer school, that usually runs the entire month of July, these people are not gonna get a break. A, and then B, um, the amount of time that they're out. It's, I think it's like three weeks during Christmas vacation, um, just seems like totally absurd, so. I think we really need to look at that, you know, the, the feedback has been negative all the way around. I've gotten no positive feedback. Um, and I'm really concerned about our staff not being able to have any kind of break, um, with us starting so early. Um, and I'm, I'm really worried about the kids being out for three weeks straight in the month of, um, December into January. Um, for that Christmas break, that seems like way too long. These kids have been out of school for so long and I know it's. Pre-planning going into next year, but that calendar is all the way messed up. Like, we need to really, really relook at that. Um, because the complaints are wild and I just wanna make sure that, that people's voices are really being heard. But again, those two things are really concerning, starting so early in August, um, and how long that Christmas break is, we really need to reevaluate that.
Yeah, I mean, um. I did hear some, some feedback, uh, we, so we went through our normal process. We, we solicited feedback from. From principals, uh, we solicited feedback from the Teacher Advisory Group and, you know, um. After all of that feedback, we, you know, one of the things, one of the main reasons we wanted to start earlier is to. To address some of the slide that, um, summer slide that we normally get and to, to try to be creative and, and, and get. Students back in person, um, a lot, you know, a little bit sooner. It, it is. Four days sooner than we would, we would have normally done it. It's not, you know, I, 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 I get it and we're gonna work with. You know, any staff that have any, you know, pre-scheduled vacations or anything like that, we'll work with them. Um, as we normally do, uh, any summer where that's the case, uh, but this decision was made. You know, and, uh, on behalf of kids, we really, that, there's some kids that have, haven't stepped foot in school since. A year and five months, a year and five months. Um, and we really think that four days before that big break is, is better than four days at the end of the year. Um, so.
But to that argument, Anthony, then why are we doing three weeks in the month of December into January? Because that defeats that argument. We're taking kids out for three weeks, which is just ridiculous, you know, when we can give them. If you even, it's not even just staff, if you have students that are in school. Um, you know, especially like even some of our special ed students that go to summer programming, they're gonna be in programming straight through the month of July. And then they're coming back even earlier too, so there's no break for those students either. And I understand that we need kids in the classroom, but a three-week break in that December to January is, it's absurd.
It's, it's two school weeks, not, not three school weeks. Yeah, I, I know you're counting the weekends. Um, but part of that is, is us wanting to also observe, uh, Three Kings Day, uh, many of. You know, we, we talk about equity, many, many of our families, um. Many of our families travel dur- during that time and, and really celebrate the Three Kings Day and, and. Um, you know, those are some of the conversations that we've had and things that we thought about and. We felt strongly that, you know, starting four days earlier, um, was gonna get kids back in school. Um, sooner than normally and, you know, I've had conversations with Pete about this as well, uh, the, at the Union President when he raised it. Uh, this isn't something that we planned on, you know, making a, a, a habit of, like, this is really in response to the pandemic. So, uh, we, I, I, I just, there's kids that haven't been in school. Come August for one year and five months and, and we're re- we really wanna get them into school sooner. Um, so, uh, I appreciate the feedback. Uh, we'll, we'll definitely continue to have conversations, I, and, and I know that next year, um. Honestly, the, this, I feel like was a rookie mistake in, on my part, um, thinking that, um. And I'm not speaking negatively of, of anybody, but I thought, you know, uh, in my rookie, uh, self. I thought that going to TAG and getting feedback on the calendar was representative of getting feedback from all teachers. And that, that, that is definitely something that, that I wanna do differently next year. Uh, I think that we need to have these conversations a lot earlier next year, so we, we'd like to start that process in January. Um, and solicit feedback to, from TAG, have them go back to the teachers and get feedback. But this, this, this decision was primarily based on, on, with, with students at the forefront of it. Getting students back in school, um, was our main priority and, and having more days before that break. To be able to get, get acclimated back to in-person learning and to address some of the. Learning loss and, you know, for, for students to be able to, to come back sooner than, than they would have in, in, under the normal schedule, um.
I, I have Mr. Sheehan.
Yeah, I have a question just regarding the, the December-January days. Is there any concern similar to how? Um, the state, and I, I don't know in which phase of the administration they, they did this, but they had originally set up that. Class of twenty-twenty-two MCAS dates during January to take the MCAS and it was right after we were returned. And then that, and getting pushed back, but as we transition back to a more regular school year. Is there a concern that they're gonna use that original model for test administration, um, for MCAS and use that January model for the, for those. Students that I, I think it was class of twenty-twenty-two that would have tested in January. And then the normal open window for access, that's usually like what, the day you get back in January. To the first Monday in February. I mean, is there a concern that we'd be losing a week of the ability to administer in, in any of that?
Uh, no concern as of right now, no.
Okay.
No further questions or comments? Um, if we could bring this up again, um, for the next. Uh, school committee meeting and. Um, see if any, um, any other, uh, school committee members or we get more feedback from the public. Um, families, um, so that way we can hear. Okay, so there's nothing further. Um, I wanna thank everyone this evening. Welcome, Mayor Murphy, to your. First school committee meeting as, uh, the chair, cause you are the chair. You keep saying Madam Chair, but I'm the Vice Chair.
Well, you're much more in charge than I am.
That you've got right.
I know that, and thank you for welcoming me. I appreciate it. I will try to do my best to make as many as I can. And, uh, you know, when I have something to offer, I'll offer and. I will try to make sure that the city services are being provided to the best of our ability, so if there are concerns, let me know. I will try to address them. Sometimes I, I'll give you the wrong answer, but I'll always try to address it, so. You have that, have my word on that.
Sounds great. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
So with that being said, do, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
I got a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, so motion second, um. Uh, Ms. LaFond, roll call, please.
Yes, ma'am. Let's see if I can get it right this time. Mayor Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. LaFave?
Yes.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Ms. Brunel? Ms. Tensley-Williams?
Yes.
Mrs. Burke's?
Yes.
Ms. Feliciano-Sims?
Yes.
Mr. Willihan?
Yes.
And Mr. Kushein?
Yes.
Great, so motion passes unanimously. Uh, we end our meeting at eight forty-three PM. Again, thank you, everyone. And we'll see you next month.
Night.
Night.